...transferred to this meeting. If you have reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. It is 10 o'clock a.m. Today is Wednesday, March 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for purposes of quorum.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr., Vice Chair Khadijah Abdul-Raqman.
Present.
All right, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What? No, what I've told y'all before, I'm gonna say it again. No, I'm not going one more time. In the Pledge of Allegiance, there is no comma after... If you look at it, you'll...I've said that a thousand times. I'm not going fast. There's just no comma.
Yes, sir.
I'm doing it right. Madam Clerk, continue, please.
On page two.
The Youth Commissioners check me out on that.
On page two, Consent Agenda. 24-0138, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed and moved to the March 20 recess meeting on page six. 24-0147, Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Request approval to enter into a contractual agreement with PAD and ARS to fulfill a grant. This item has been moved to the recess meeting.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, Commissioners, any items on the consent agenda? All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Vice Chair Abdul-Raqman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have an item requested to be an add-on item today by Commissioner Barrett. 24-0175, Discussion, Animal Control.
All right, that will require a supermajority vote, five votes. Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion fails. Four yeas, zero nays.
It says pass. Yeah.
Yeah, supermajority.
Okay, fails.
You...okay, with Commissioner Hall, that it passes.
All right, that's added to the agenda. Continue.
Bottom of page seven. Regular meeting agenda, adoption of the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one amendment on page 12. Chairman Pitts has requested to move his item 24-0173, Discussion and Approval of Back-to-Work Plan Pre-COVID, to hear that before 24-0172.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Commissioners, any items on the regular agenda? All right, entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended. Commissioner Barrett has moved to approve, seconded by Vice Chair Abdul-Raqman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. 24-0157, Ratification of Minutes. Regular Meeting Minutes, February 7. Recession Meeting Post-Agenda Minutes, February 21, 2024.
All right, motion to approve the minutes. A motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Natalie Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. On page eight, 24-0158, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. The first proclamation is recognizing Sumaya Khalifa Appreciation Day, sponsored by Vice Chair Abdul-Raqman.
All right, it's 10:07.
Can I get Sumaya Khalifa and all her family members and supporters to come down, please? We can take the picture. We can take the pictures. Is everybody down here? Good morning, everyone. With it being Women's History Month, I take a special, special pride in honoring this individual to the left of me. You know, I'm just a Southern girl, grew up on the dirt roads of Georgia, but as a little girl, I heard this saying that says, "A little piece of leather, but show enough put together." This is Sumaya Khalifa. Women's History Month highlights the contributions of women in history and contemporary society and is celebrated during the month of March in the United States, Great Britain, Australia, which corresponds with the International Women's Day on March 8. And whereas Sumaya Khalifa is the founder and executive director of the Islamic Speakers Bureau of Atlanta, one of the most distinguished community-building organizations in the metro area that connects American Muslim communities with a wide range of civic and faith-based groups, bringing Muslim voices to places where they have not been before. And whereas Sumaya Khalifa is also president and CEO of Khalifa Consulting, where she provides corporate, nonprofit, and governmental institutions with wide-ranging expertise and practical solutions to cross-cultural operations. She is also a highly regarded coach, trainer, and consultant specializing in intercultural communications, diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as leadership development. And whereas Sumaya sits on the boards of several organizations, including the Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta, the Georgia Interface Public Policy Center, the Atlanta Jewish Film Festival, the Community Foundation of Greater Atlanta, and the Carter Center's Boards of Counselors, and whereas Sumaya has been an adjunct faculty member at Emory University's Center for Continuing Education since 2009, and she has published numerous articles, reviews, blog posts, podcasts, and online videos on managing cultural differences. I take an honor in opening up Women's History Month with such a stellar community member who transcends and believes in all faiths and all beliefs and that all people have a seat at the table. I honor her today. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, in commemorations of Women's History Month, recognizes Sumaya Khalifa for her dedication to providing opportunities to learn about Islam and the Muslim community and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 6, 2024, as Sumaya Khalifa Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Would you please put your hands together?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much. This is a huge honor. Couldn't have done it with all my friends and family, especially my husband who's here, and just the community and my team who works tirelessly to make our organization what it is. A huge honor and a thank you to our beloved Commissioner Khadijah and to all Commissioners and Mr. Chairman Rob Pitts. So thank you again to all of you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
The next proclamation is recognizing Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, sponsored by Commissioner Ellis.
I'd like to invite some of our friends and clients to come on down here and join us for this proclamation. Good morning. Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, you're gonna be talking here in a minute? All right, fantastic, fantastic. How you doing, buddy? Good to see you.
Just that fountain's for you right there.
Great crowd. All right, I think we got everybody down. So everybody, thanks for joining us, coming down and visiting with us this morning and sharing with us during this time of this proclamation. It's a very important proclamation that I want to share. Whereas in 1987, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the month of March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to increase public awareness of the needs and exceptional potential of Americans with intellectual developmental disabilities. And whereas intellectual developmental disabilities are a group of conditions due to an impairment in physical learning, language, or behavior areas that begin during the developmental period and may impact day-to-day functioning that usually lasts throughout a person's lifetime. And whereas the goal in 2024 for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is to identify and create new opportunities that will better enable individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families to live, learn, work, experience, play, and thrive in their communities. And whereas orange, and I guess that's why you see it up here, and today for this guy who likes red and black, orange will be a good color, right? At least we're out of football season, so. It's the official color. Orange is the official color of Dede Awareness Month because it symbolizes energy and positivity. One of the easiest ways to participate is to invite your team to wear orange. And whereas Fulton County's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities has served ADD individuals through its Day Services Program for the past 48 years, the program is committed to bringing awareness and acceptance for people of every ability and providing opportunities to become more independent, economically self-sufficient, and contributing members of their communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the entire Board of Commissioners of Fulton County recognizes the intellectually developmentally disabled as valuable members of the Fulton County community, encourages their inclusion in every facet of life in metro Atlanta, and does hereby proclaim March 2024 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Fulton County, Georgia. All right, and I think we've got somebody who wants to share a little bit with us here. Come right here. We've got a microphone here. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Whitlock Hayes. Thank you for coming. We...
P-H-O. Continuous.
Continuous support. I accept this. Proclamation on behalf of Fulton County. Behave our health and developmental disability. We are looking forward to celebrate Dede Awareness Month. Entire month of March. Our name for two thousand and four is a world of opportunities.
Yes, very good. Great job. Great job. Got anybody else like to say anything? All right, all right, set it off.
Presentation of certificates, Youth Commission Induction Ceremony.
Good day, everyone. My name is Reginald Crossley, and I represent the Department of Community Development and lead the Fulton County Youth Commission Program. At this time, we will start our induction ceremony for the 2023 through 2024 Youth Commission Term. These young people serve as the eyes, ears, and voice for youth throughout Fulton County, so it is a very special occasion to recognize them this morning. We would like Youth Commissioners to first stand and raise your right hand, and I'd like to ask our great Chairman Rob Pitts to read the Oath of Service.
All right, state your name as I read the oath here. I, and state your name. Do affirm that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Youth Commissioner for Fulton County in all matters that require me, to the best of my knowledge and skill, to advise the Fulton County Board of Commissioners about how Fulton County can best address youth concerns and issues, design techniques to prevent at-risk situations of teenagers in Fulton County, influence policies that impact children and youth. I do further solemnly affirm that I will endeavor to discharge my duties in the following manner: participate in monthly meetings and community projects, maintain contact with Commissioners on youth issues, attend Board of Commissioners meetings, plan community service projects that will benefit youth, and reflect favorably on Fulton County government and citizens, and share pertinent information with my peers on youth-related issues. I pledge that I will fulfill these duties, and I will act in my judgment, which will be the most conducive to the welfare and best interest of the youth of the entire county. These affirmations I hereby make on this sixth day in March of 2024. All right, congratulations.
Next, we will distribute our certificates of induction. I'll call students down per district. I ask our Board of Commissioners to stand on my left, and you can pass the certificates to your respective Youth Commission representative. Starting with Commissioner Thorn, District 1, Maya Cunningham. David Alexander. Rachel Alexander. Presha Shah. Ruhi Datamani. Commissioner Thorn, can you please meet the students by the flag for a picture? Starting with our next District 2, Commissioner Ellis, Namia Lusant. Melanie Harper. Yash Valakara. Nathaniel De Silva. Sarah Lopez. District 3, Commissioner Barrett. Darren Kalis. Corinne Evans. And Maya Hallam. Commissioner Barrett, please meet them by the flag. Next, Commissioner Hall, District 4. Representative District 4, Sierra Pape, who serves as the Vice Chair. London Krista White. Alana Copeland. Rashawn Regis. And Nasir Simmons. Commissioner Arrington, District 5. Maia Henderson. Leila Lopez, oh, excuse me, Leila Jones. Jada Hall. Pravella Adou. And Mackay Haywood. Commissioner Khadijah, District 6. Vice Chair. Yes, ma'am. Fatima Mohammed. And Maya Nelson. And last but not least, representing at large, serving as a Youth Commission Chair, Adriana Claudio. Before we end, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their continuous support, our county management staff and executive leadership, the External Affairs Team, the Department of Community Development, and, most importantly, or not least, our parents and students for their time and contribution to making this eve, this day, possible. We thank you all for your support, and I would like to yield this one minute to our Chair.
Good morning, everyone. I would first like to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing us today. I would also like to sincerely thank Mr. Crossley for dedicating in his effort in promoting youth leadership that has fostered this amazing program. On behalf of us Youth Commissioners, we thank you all for believing in our ability to be leaders of Fulton County. During my time as a Fulton County Youth Commissioner, I've had the pleasure to serve my community. Through committee-specific work, the Youth Commission has lobbied bills for mental health initiatives, created environmental awareness campaigns, and the list goes on. The people I have met and the experiences I have gained remind me every day of the good that comes when youth are given a platform to be the voices of change in their community. It is because of this that I am very excited for the future of the Youth Commission. Everyone in this group is beyond talented and deserving of their position, and I am honored that I get to help lead such an amazing program with such amazing people. As we settle deeper into 2024, please look forward to the initiatives we are launching and continuing. The Youth Commission has worked very hard, and we are excited to move ahead in our commitment towards the betterment of youth in Fulton County. Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes our segment.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page eight, Public Hearings 240159, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing by registering on the county website, Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 60 minutes. In the event the 60-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the BOC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, we'll start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received five speaker cards. Will all five speakers please come forward? Senator Donzella James, Amanda Timson, Mike Russell, L.A. Pink, and Paul Hershey.
All right, speakers, when you have 15 seconds left on your two minutes, I'll say 15 seconds, and that is your clue to conclude your remarks. And based upon the new rules of the Board, the elected officials only get two minutes, as opposed to how it used to be, which was unlimited.
Okay, let me see if I can stand up. No, I don't think so. Right here? Have two new knees, I can't walk up here, y'all. Yet. Next time. Good morning to our Honorable Chairman and all the distinguished Commissioners. And ladies and gentlemen, I am Donzella James, a lifelong Fulton County resident, born and raised, great a baby, and I have had the honor to serve the 35th District of the State of Georgia as their Senator for many years now, for two tenures, actually. And as I go, I went around last year, I gotta talk fast, because, you know, by the time I say my name, the two minutes up. But let me just say that I came to support a resolution that would support Senate Bill 125. It's a bill that I saw a need for when I talked to students at our colleges around, as well as the veterans. Veterans for Justice came to me and asked me to help them, and then, of course, our seniors. But it is a bill to repeal the Georgia Code to allow local governments to regulate their city rental costs in the State of Georgia. What happens is, we're one of 13 states that have a ban on any county or municipality having control over rent. So this is a bill that would only lift that so that the, excuse me? So, up already? I did, Madam Clerk, did you, were you able to give them the? Okay, so in front of you, you have Senate Bill, I'm trying to talk real fast, and it's hard to do. You have the legislation that passed.
Senator? Go ahead.
Not only is it a problem with gouging, rent gouging, of young people paying $1,000 one year, and when it's time to renew their lease, they have to pay two and three and four. So it's doubling, tripling, and quadrupling right before us. We have to protect our students and our seniors and all our tenants from gouging. So this bill only will stop gouging. It's right in front of you right now, and it did, it is moving in the Legislature. It did pass the Senate, and it will, it's on the Rules Calendar to go to the House. So it is Senate Bill 125, and I ask you to please consider it all if I can answer any question about it, because without a cap placed on rent, costs skyrocket and causes many social issues in our communities and around the state. So thank you for giving me this time, even though I had 10 more pages to say to you. But I'll be happy to answer any question, and I give you more than two minutes if you come to the Senate chambers, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Please vote favorably on Resolution 24-0159. Is that what that is? It's by Commissioner Hall. Ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Timson. I'm formerly the Director of Juvenile Diversion for the Fulton County District Attorney's Office. On April 4, 2022, just 90 days after I was fired for blowing the whistle on Fannie Willis and her administration and walked out of this very building by seven armed investigators, my attorney sent each Commissioner a draft complaint with 18 exhibits totaling in over 200 pages. Attached was Exhibit 12, which is the audio recording that has now been heard by so many. Prior to my termination, I made 42 separate point of contacts with nearly every branch of Fulton County government seeking refuge from the relentless retaliation that I endured. On January 14, 2022, I was fired just 20 minutes after making my third formal DRCRC complaint against Ms. Willis and her goons. Due to time restrictions, I'm unable to detail each of these actions, but again, you all have had two years to familiarize yourself with these details. I did everything that Fulton County government prescribes a whistleblower do to be protected, yet Ms. Willis and her administration were allowed to retaliate against me with absolute impunity. Ms. Willis continues to intimidate me, regularly lurking on my online profiles. As recently as February 20, 2024, when she, embroiled in scandal and corruption, had the time to stalk my LinkedIn page four separate times in a 24-hour span. In closing, my case is currently in active litigation as we speak. Every document that I have read regarding the junior DA program specifically states participants must be Fulton County residents exclusively. They are stating under oath in depositions that they can serve youth from out of this county and state, displacing Fulton County residents from their own resources despite documentation proving otherwise. You all, and you all are allowing them to do this. Shame on you. You all knew about this for two years and were silent, and willfully failed the youth of this county. Thank you.
Good morning. It wasn't long ago that I stood here when we were debating the budget, and some of you voted to raise our taxes. And at that time, you promised to be good stewards of our tax dollars. But apparently, that has not transpired. We've lost the taxpayers of Fulton County millions of dollars. First, with the actions of Ms. Hall that cost us over $1 million. Then you have the shenanigans in the DA's office that have cost us untold number of dollars. And now we have this report from the Sheriff's Office, out-of-control spending. Nobody knows where the money's going. It's not being used for the purposes for which it was budgeted, and that needs to change. We need real rules in this county. We are the laughingstock of the nation to make sure things are done right, there's accountability, there's transparency, and people are held responsible for their actions. You know, with these issues with hiring, why is there not a system where these things are made public? Where there's a committee to select who's hired? Where there's a job description? Where there's qualifications for office? That everybody can see? That would put, that would end some of these shenanigans. Could I go down and start, if I was a Commissioner or the Sheriff or the DA, could I hire the cute guy at my gym to come work for me at the county for $100,000? Could I hire the guy who handed me my food out of Chick-fil-A window to come down here and work for $60,000? Because that's the way it's happening right now. We need transparency. We need accountability and responsibility. Every dime that comes into this county, whether it's from taxpayers or grant, needs to go to the financial officer. And every dime that's spent needs to be through the financial officer, and it needs to be transparent, and it needs to be spent according to what it was budgeted for. We need those changes now, and we need an audit of those offices and an investigation immediately. You promised to do better. Now's the time.
So as he's talking, I have no introduction, because it doesn't matter about who I am. It matters about what we got going on down here at Fulton County. I'm asking for an open investigation today on Labut. We, like he said, we got Commissioner Hall chasing balls. This has to stop. We got, let's get back to Labut. He has been using the inmate welfare funding to pay a pastor for, and I sent this information to a couple of different people, so they have the list of money he has spent recklessly. But a pastor for $6,000 a month? I mean, I need to become a pastor. He has, 8/25/22, 2022, he paid for face painting, $425 off of inmate welfare funding. A DJ, two of them. One, he paid $675. The other one, he paid $1,300, all at this same event that he had, and there's several, it keeps going on. He paid for an individual to go to college off of the inmate welfare funding to, for, and that came out to be one of the sheriff deputies. Look into that. That was on 8/29/22 for $1,082.49. He paid $40,000 in Chick-fil-A gift cards off of inmate funding, welfare funding. $40,000. What inmate is eating Chick-fil-A? Okay, so let's keep going, because this one right here, Bob, this should interest you, because tell a track on 12/16/21 and 2/3/22, he paid them $195,000 out of inmate welfare funding. Okay, so, and you guys gave him $5 million, didn't you? Hmm, okay. There is 28 pages of insufficient funding used.
My name is Paul Hershey. Reasons Why Fannie Must Go. It has been clearly established that the Trump prosecution should be taken away from her due to the numerous ethical violations she has committed. She has obviously lied to the court and committed perjury on the witness stand. The evidence has established that she has tried to influence other potential witnesses to support her falsities. She has misappropriated funds providing to her by both the county and the feds. She is currently under a federal investigation that's going to continue and more, and is going to look into the grant funds of Fulton County. That's coming. The State Ethics Commission is currently investigating her, and it's going to look at anybody that supports her. Evidence has been shared that she has created a hostile work environment within the Fulton County District Attorney's Office that promotes race-baiting and favoritism that divides and awards due to race. That's a civil rights violation that you have not addressed. That's going to come from the feds. She has confessed to cooperating, she has refused to cooperate with investigations and probes into her malfeasance within her office. She spends county tax dollar funds without regard to audit and accountability, and that's going to come. Her demeanor includes defiance, contempt, ridicule, and hostility. The bottom line is, as Fulton County Commissioners, you should have been investigating all of these malfeasance and the ethical violation.
15 seconds.
And the bottom line is, you're not doing your job. Every time that I come up here, I say the same damn thing. Why? Why are you refusing to take action that your authority gives you? Why are you failing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we have four speakers on Zoom.
Good morning, Commissioners. The first person to speak is Kevin Muldowney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Well, there's currently a Georgia Senate hearing taking place right now dealing with fiscal waste in the Fulton DA's office. Very timely. We have a Commissioner, Natalie Hall, who's wasted almost $1 million in county resources because she couldn't keep her urges in check. Now that same Commissioner apparently wants to monopolize the proclamation process going forward for the next three or four meetings. It looks like a PR stunt to get her constituents focused on happy thoughts and away from the abuse of her office and county resources that she's perpetrated on the taxpayers of Fulton. Please don't let this happen.
The next person to speak is Matt Rowenzack.
Good morning, Commissioners. As they say, eternal vigilance is required of citizens in order to prevent your government from essentially operating inappropriately or overstepping its bounds. Well, I'd say we have an example of that today. When I look at the long list of proclamations, I see eight of them. So let's go down the list and see which Commissioners sponsored each one. The first one, Commissioner Hall. The second one, Commissioner Hall. The third one, Commissioner Hall. The fourth one, Commissioner Hall. The fifth one, Commissioner Hall. The sixth one, Commissioner Hall. The seventh one, Chairman Pitts. The seventh one, Chairman Pitts. And the eighth one, Commissioner Hall. So we have almost 90% of the proclamations from one commissioner. My question is, do these take up county resources? If so, then we have a commissioner who continues to not only abuse county, AKA taxpayer resources, but also potentially uses these proclamations as part of her reelection campaign. Board, we have a problem. Despite the already incurred almost a million dollars of expense from Commissioner Hall's poor behavior, there seems to be zero inward reflection on how she conducts herself with taxpayer resources. And I suppose that shouldn't be surprise when you Commissioner Hall and Commissioners Barrett align yourself with our corrupt DA. But for every day Fulton County residents that do the right thing and have to live within their means and often make difficult decision, it pisses them off when they see this type of behavior. And I'd suggest putting some limitations on these proclamations if they indeed are excessively using county resources. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Katie Benson.
Hello, commissioners. I'm a resident of Fulton County, and I'm curious as to why there are so many, many proclamations being issued from Commissioner Hall this morning. Why is that allowed to have so many proclamations from only one commissioner? Especially on an election year? Especially when Commissioner Hall is under so much scrutiny? And her actions should be scrutinized as she has dug herself into a very deep hole professionally and personally with her abhorrent scandals. Thank you for your time.
The next person to speak is Ben Howard.
Greetings, commissioners and staff, and special greetings, fellow citizens. Ben Howard, senior advocate, public policy analyst. In February of this year, the movers and shakers of the Housing Authority of Fulton County had on its website a meeting notice for March of last year. We can only hope the board officers are treating those millions of dollars entrusted to them with a greater degree of accuracy and transparency. Office of Aging administrators have chosen to not delineate unfinished business on the agendas for the Commission on Elder Affairs. A member of the present Commission on Elder Affairs proposed that COEA have a presence at the various senior facilities. A look back at the dusty minutes of COEA during the days when the Council on Aging had active representation on that board will show that the Commission on Elder Affairs' presence at senior multi-purpose facilities as well as matters like accreditation of the county's four senior multi-purpose facilities was unfinished business way back then. Stay tuned on this matter of the delineation of unfinished business.
And this concludes the Zoom public comments.
Madam Clerk.
No further speakers.
All right, and continue, Madam Clerk.
Bottom of page eight, under County Manager's Action Items, Open and Responsible Government, 240160, Finance. Request approval for resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County authorizing the issuance and sale of Fulton County General Fund Tax Anticipation Notes. Authorizing and distribution of use of a request for bids and/or preliminary official statement and notice of sale in each case related to such tax anticipation notes and the solicitation of offers for the purchase of the notes and related matters.
All right, Madam CFO, any comment quickly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the initial step that's necessary for us to start the process this year. We'd like to bring back the bids to the board at the second meeting in April and close in early May.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page nine, 240161, Real Estate and Asset Management, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed $1,498,000 to demolish and renovate 16 public restrooms in the Fulton County Juvenile Justice Center.
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 240162, request approval of the lowest responsible bidders in an amount not to exceed $1,200,000 to provide standby onsite HVAC on-call maintenance services.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote. Madam Clerk.
One moment.
All right, what's the problem? All right. All right, take a voice vote. All right, those in favor.
Okay, the vote is open on item 162.
Thank you. Please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. 240163, request approval to increase spending authority for industrial racking for the Fulton County Central Warehouse in an amount not to exceed $11,831.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Abdo Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 240164, Human Resources Management, request approval of a resolution renewing authorization for enhanced overtime compensation for designated sheriff personnel.
All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Natalie Hall, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a few questions for just remarks on this. So I'd asked Mr. Herman to provide some data on this last year because you recall, the ask on this and a response on this was really about ensuring that we had adequate staffing and so forth at the jail. And in it to be focused around detention officers and the folks that were working and doing the detention effort. So I think we spent about six and a half million last year. Is that correct, Mr. Herman?
Give me a minute, Commissioner. I'm pulling up the file right now.
Okay. We'll pull it up and verify it, but based on the data he gave me, we spent about six and a half million last year. And just under, just under $2 million of that was spent on civilian staff. And 3.6 million, it looks like, it was hard to tell in this, but it looks like a lot of this was spent on non-jail staff, non-jail workers. And, you know, I have, I know we kind of deliberately have, you know, dialed this back a little bit this past, this year. And I think this needs a lot of, lot of scrutiny going forward to make sure that this is going for what its intended purposes were. You know, just last year, 22 people received a million dollars' worth of overtime pay. And average salary of those folks was $65,000. The average overtime they got was $46,000. There were a couple of noted situations in here where we had people in administrative roles who were making close to the same amount of, like one had a salary of $46,000 and made $42,000 in overtime in an administrative role. So to me, I mean, I've got some concerns about what we are renewing. And I guess sort of my main question to you, Mr. Herman, is with what we are approving here, is, does this explicitly ensure that what we're allocating is going for enhanced overtime is going to folks working in the jail as opposed to, you know, everybody it seems across the sheriff's office? I mean, there were even, there were, it wasn't necessarily a significant amount of funds, but there was even overtime paid to their counsel. So, you know, this clearly was not what was intended when we passed this last year in terms of what's played out. So can you describe for us what's, what we are, what you're requesting approval to renew authorization of? And is this different than what was approved last year?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner and everyone. Kenett L. Herman, Jr., Chief HR Officer. So the resolution in front of you today for your approval is significantly different than what we approved last year.
Just a minute, you say it is different?
Is significantly different.
Significantly different.
Yes. And I say significant only because last year we didn't have many parameters for the resolution. In this year's version, the resolution is very specific. It limits the double overtime only to two units within the Sheriff's Department, Unit 3302 and 3308, which are the jail units, the primary jail unit and the, I think in the, in our structure is the satellite office. So those are the only two units that can be eligible for double overtime. We further go down and say, well, it's not a receptionist in the jail unit, it's a detention officer or a sheriff deputy. So those are the only two positions in those only two units, which makes it significantly different than what we, where we were last year, where it was any deputy or any detention officer regardless of the unit that you worked in or what you were doing at any particular time. And we also excluded the crime suppression unit in this iteration as well.
Okay. Does it concern you or particularly raise red flags to you that you, we would have people receiving upwards of, you know, $50,000 in overtime? And, and I guess underlying this, this question is, you know, how are we, you know, kind of auditing or verifying that these are, that these are accurate, right? And not, there wasn't a potential, you know, abuse going on here?
Correct, Commissioner. So one of the primary, I guess the comfort level that we try to gain in this process and any other process with relative to the county's time and attendance and compensation methods is to ensure that each employee is reporting their time accurately at the time clock. In this instance, the deputies and detention officers are non-exempt, sorry, the lower level deputies and detention officers are non-exempt. And we have spoken repeatedly with the Sheriff's Department to ensure that those individuals are physically punching at the time clock to ensure that the time is accurate. I know we had some problems last year that I believe we've resolved, and we will continue that conversation with the Sheriff's Office to make sure that individuals are reporting their time accurately. Outside of that, if we, if we don't have accurate reporting, then, you know, the area of concern could become, could grow. Because if we're not tracking the time accurately, not only is it a concern for us from a compensation perspective, but it could also open up a window for other potential federal violations if we're not accurately tracking the time of our non-exempt employees in our official time clock. And that's why we even have provisions in the resolution that speak to that it must be done in the time clock. So again, putting a lot of onus on the employees, a lot of onus on the sheriff supervisors to ensure that is occurring.
I heard you say a lot of onus on the employee themselves. I don't know. I don't know if like we do any sort of, you know, kind of spot audit review of this stuff to sort of test out, you know, when you were, I mean, if there's what would appear to be, you know, an aberration, you know, or abnormality in terms of this doesn't necessarily make sense that somebody worked, you know, X number of hours, you know, for several weeks on end kind of thing. Is there anything that would sort of trigger that, this sort of, you know, in our, in our systems to say, there's a flag here? And, yeah, I guess, I, if there's not, there's not, but I think that we need to, we need to come up with some ways which better monitors this and, you know, triggers some sort of exception review to ensure that what's bubbling up here is accurate. I mean, because that, to have that narrow of a group receive sort of that significant portion of the overtime funding, and some of those clearly being, you know, non-jail staff, it is just, it's concerning. Any thoughts on that?
Commissioner, I'll have to double check. I know when we were in a, in the prior time and attendance system, we did have, we did put in a flag that, for example, if I remember correctly, if, if there was more than 40 hours of overtime, it would trigger something for my team to bring to our attention, or bring to my attention so I could discuss to, with the respective department head. So let me take that back to see if that's something that we can do again within the new environment that we are in. But then also understand that, you know, by, by the time we get the information is probably a week after the activity has taken place. So it can only be an audit to try and clean up any potential errors in the time and attendance system. But we, my team does that, working with the Sheriff's Department on a biweekly basis to ensure that the employees are paid accurately. But our process, you know, if you see someone has earned $6,000 in overtime for that week, and it's signed off by their supervisor and signed off by their payroll liaison within the Sheriff's Office and sends, and comes to us, it's hard for me to refute the accuracy of that, of that certification.
Okay, okay. Last question for you. Do you have or in receipt of a, I don't know, of an org chart or sort of a unit chart for the Sheriff's Department that would show, you know, kind of who works in each particular unit?
No, I made a request and have not received that as yet from Mr..
Did you make that request again on behalf of, of the board? I would like to see that.
Yes, sir.
What's the request, Commissioner?
That we have a, have a picture of where people work in the, in the Sheriff's Department and, you know, kind of notating these individuals work in this unit, these people work in the jail, these people, you know, more of a specific sort of breakdown of where people are working within the Sheriff's Department.
All right, Vice Chair Abdo Rockman, please.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I'm going to continue to ask this question. Falls on deaf ears. First of all, let me say this. Any personnel that works overtime should be paid. Let me be crystal clear about that. However, I have asked over and over again, there was a statement made by the sheriff that money was accidentally spent on items in, from the inmate welfare fund. They were accidentally, they weren't meant to be spent on something, but they were. So if you accidentally spent money on something, that mean you're going to put that money back? At least that's what I would think. However, just because you're not going to answer the question does not mean it is going to go away. And so I have questions about this. I really would want to put this on hold and give the individuals that need to answer that question an opportunity to answer that question and other questions that I have because at the end of the day, Chairman, and my colleagues, we are steward of taxpayers' dollars. And we cannot continue to sign off without accountability. Now, now, at the end of the day, law enforcement, when they work, and we know the jail is understaffed, they should be paid. So do not take this as a anti-law enforcement, as an anti-not allowing individuals to be paid for the time that they work. However, there is a responsibility with taxpayer dollars to answer questions. So I have questions that I need answered before I can sign off on this. So I would ask my colleagues to hold this until the next board meeting.
Is there a substitute motion?
Substitute motion to hold this.
All right, is there a second? All right, properly moved and seconded to hold. Christopher Barrett? Christopher Barrett. All right. Commissioner Natalie Hall, motion before us is to hold, substitute motion before us is to hold.
When is this overtime supposed to be started and paid to the people in the Sheriff's Department? Does anyone else, Madam CFO, Mr. Herman?
Uh, well, excuse me. Good afternoon, Commissioner, actually, good morning. If this, if the resolution as presented is approved by the Board of Commissioners today, we have built in a one-week timeframe because, since we're off, we're off pay week cycles right now. So it was slated to start the next, the earliest available beginning of the pay cycle, which was, which is next week, Wednesday, if it's adopted today. But just, just for clarification, I just want to make sure that it's clear that employees, non-exempt employees in the Sheriff's Office, if they work hours that qualify them for overtime, they are being paid overtime in accordance with the FLSA. This provision just goes to extend the Sheriff's authority to pay twice their annual, twice their salary for working in excess of the FLSA guidelines. So I just want to make sure that's clear that they're, because I, I heard some comments that they're not getting their overtime, but they are, if they work the, the proper time.
All right, so they're getting their overtime, and this is just to allow it to be two times, which is from what, from my years in working in corporate and government, that's not anything unusual. Is that correct?
Um, no, i- it's, it's something that we've seen, especially in the law enforcement world, as we trail our best to keep our law enforcement employees engaged in our operations and not go to other operations that have similar provisions with two times their overtime rate and so forth.
All right, thank you so much.
Commissioner Barrett.
So, Mr. Herman, just to be clear, if this does not pass today, the people who have put in double time, or sorry, overtime hours, will be getting one and a half times?
That's correct.
And so instead of the double time, so they will be getting less money for their effort than they may have been promised?
If there was a promise made, then yes, they, if there was a promise.
Or when they were expecting, I guess maybe is a better way to say it.
Correct.
Maybe not promised, but, okay. So it is time-sensitive in that regard then, if we do intend to pay double time?
If, if you're looking at it from that perspective, that is, there was a, a promise made to the employees by the sheriff or one of, some of his team, and if it's not done, then it's delayed three weeks, then yes, it, it could create some potential morality issues within the Sheriff's ranks.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Abdu Rockman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm not going to belabor the point here. I empathize with the employees that may get the one and a half as opposed to 2%, uh, two times. However, I empathize with the Fulton County taxpayer first. And the reason I, I say this is because leadership has an, a responsibility to answer questions. And as a sitting Commissioner, that is a steward of all of Fulton County taxpayers, I have a duty to ask the question. Now whether you want to answer the question as a constitutional officer, that's on you, but it's not going to stop me from asking the question. The question is, and I've asked this for quite a while, there was a mistake made in money being spent somewhere that shouldn't have been spent, not my words, those were the sheriff's words. So if there was a mistake, were you planning on moving the money that you mistakenly spent to somewhere else? I need that question answered. This is not about the employees, this is about Fulton County taxpayers, the accountability and the fact that we're not going to continue to glaze over and not answer questions that need to be answered.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I empathize with the hard-working employees who have to go to work in the jail that we are currently trying to figure out what to do with because it has been underfunded and it is rotting literally from the inside out, and I empathize with those employees. Now, as Commissioner Barrett brought to light, they could have been promised, and of course, I'm sure they know that this is on the agenda today, and they may be expecting this amount of overtime, and I want them to have that. That's the least that we could do for them. All of our employees deserve better. We received the agenda on Friday. We have plenty of time to ask questions from that time until the day of the BOC meeting. People are running for reelection, people are running in their departments, there is a lot going on. We cannot take a not, a no response as being a negative. It's not always a negative. It is most likely that people are very busy, so reach out to them again and try to get what you need. We don't have to be at odds all the time. We are here for the people, all of us are here for the people, but we're also here to try to make sure that the employees get what they need, and this is something that they need. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Thorne.
I, I understand the employees and the necessity to maintain our good, and the retention that the sheriff has is not the best, and he's short-staffed, I totally understand that. But Commissioner, Vice Chair Abdu Rockman has been asking these questions for months and months about it since, you know, the fall, early fall of last year, and hasn't gotten answers. And we are not denying them this pay, we're just asking to put it on hold. Some of the things that were brought to light by Commissioner Ellis are concerning to me. 22 people getting over $1 million in overtime, people doubling their salaries in overtime. Just need further explanation from how the office is being run itself and some questions before we just blanket, just approve it, that's not responsible spending in my view. We need to have answers and we need to be held accountable for our decisions we make. And I think holding this is the wise thing to do so we can get those answers. Kenneth Herman, I'd like to understand the check-in procedures better for hourly staff. I've had experience working in elections where people were docking hours and didn't even show up except for the meals, lunch and dinner. They'd come out of the woodwork, and there was no really checking in or following. Of course, that was one contract that went awry, and I think it's my responsibility to make sure there's proper procedures in place to safeguard the taxpayer dollars.
Commissioner, we could get you a copy of our, our guidelines that we've issued to department head and HR liaisons relative to non-exempt employees and the requirements to punch in and punch out, punch in and punch out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett.
Okay, again, just to be clear, Commissioner Thorne just said we're not, how did you phrase it, Commissioner Thorne, you said we're not taking the pay away from them, we're just holding it?
We're just, we're just.
So, so then let me just be, ask that question to you, Mr. Herman. If we don't deal with this today and pass this today, and people are paid at one and a half times, will they get the additional money after this does pass? How, is that accurate, what Commissioner Thorne is saying?
If, if, if the language stays the same in the resolution, whenever you adopt it, it would be moving forward, not retroactive.
So they would not get the pay?
Right. Retroactivity creates significant concerns and manual calculations that my team would have to do, finance would have to do, to ensure that we, we pay that 0.5 difference in, in pay, and I would highly recommend against that, but it would be a moving forward adoption once approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so to just be very clear then, if we do not move on this today, there are people who are going to work overtime likely in the jail, who will be paid at one and a half times, not two times, and they will not get that money back, to be clear. So we are in fact taking money out of their pockets. I think it's, I, with all due respect, Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, I 1 million percent appreciate your desire to get the questions answered that you've been asking, but I think it, it's not fair to put that on these individuals who are working in the jail. And I just have one other comment about the, the doubling of salaries with overtime, and you can chime in here, Mr. Herman, if it makes sense to you, but it seems to me that that's a pretty easy thing to do if you're getting double, because working an additional 20 hours a week is not uncommon. I know certainly in the early part of my career, I easily put in more than 60 hours a week at work. So putting in 60 hours, if somebody is dedicated and they're willing to work an extra 20 hours, they are going to double their salary. That is the math, correct?
Correct, Commissioner. You know, the, the key thing is the accuracy of that, and that's why we have checks and balances in the process. The employees, the first check, the media supervisors, the second check, there's another manager and a payroll liaison, so there's four checks and balances in that process. So by the time it comes to us, you know, we assume that it's accurate, as accurate as possible, and we are, we are paid accurately based on the actual hours worked by that non-exempt employee.
Right, and I think personally, for the men and women in the Sheriff's Department who are willing to work that hard and put in an extra 20 hours a week, they absolutely deserve to get their pay. And to be clear, doubling your pay from, you know, $40,000 a year to $80,000 a year, I mean, $40,000 a year you can barely live on, like, you certainly can't live in Fulton County for that, in any case. I, I, you know, I don't think the numbers are, are questionable on that count. Thank you.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Sheriff's people are here who handle the payroll and HR. Can you please come and answer some questions? Thank you so much.
Good morning, Michael Show, Chief of Staff, Sheriff's Office.
Amelia Joy, our Chief Counsel to the Sheriff.
I believe there are some that have questions for you.
I don't know if she's in the queue.
I'm sorry, I wasn't the one that called you. Natalie Hall called you all to the podium, so. Commissioner Hall, you have a question for them?
No, I thought you had some questions that were not answered. That's what you said earlier.
Yeah, but I asked the sheriff to answer the questions. What's amazing to me is that a flurry of individuals came here today when I decided to use my position as an elected official to make a statement and ask a question. Now I know some of you all are going to be offended by that, and I'm so sorry if you're offended. I want the question answered so we can do one of two things. This can fail today, or it can be held today, but I want the answer from the duly-elected sheriff of Fulton County that I've been asking for months.
All right, the motion on the floor is to hold. Commissioner Arrington.
This is such political drama that it is funny. You got someone whose Chief of Staff is running the campaign of another candidate for sheriff, trying to call the sheriff down here to ask him questions that they know the answer to. Y'all took the inmate welfare fund money away from the sheriff. That's what happened to the money. That's where it went. Y'all took it away from him, and then you got somebody talking about somebody making $80,000 a year in a full-time job, and they paying their Chief of Staff $186,000 part-time. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? You worried about somebody making $80,000 who's working double time, and you paying your chap, Chief of Staff $186,000 part-time? Good Lord have mercy, this is political drama. This is political drama with people trying to push their positions. It is so crazy. What happened to the money? The money got spent, the man that did it got fired, he's gone, he's been held accountable, he no longer has a job. What, y'all, y'all took the money away. The inmate welfare fund no longer exists. It no longer exists. The, the, the errors were admitted. The errors were admitted and the man was terminated. And so that's where the money is, that there is no money to pay back because all of the other money has been allocated in the budget. Do we, did you allocate some money for payback in the budget? Of course not. So you know, it's not going to get paid back. But, you know, we want to make, we want to put on a big show. We're going to call the sheriff down here. He needs to come down here and answer these questions. Ridiculous, absolute political drama.
All right. Commissioner, Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, the motion on the floor is to hold. All right, uh, let's be, be, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. And we don't ask questions of those in the audience, and I'd appreciate if you would not respond to what you hear up here. We try to keep the meeting moving forward. Commissioner, Vice Chair, you have the floor.
Call question.
All right, question's been called. Let's vote on the call of the question. All right, seconded by Commissioner Thorne.
And the vote is open on call the question. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
All right, the motion before us is to hold.
And the motion to hold passes, four yeas, three nays.
Next item.
Bottom of page nine, 240165, Purchasing in Contract Compliance, Request Approval of Funding for Professional Services, Contracts Entered Into by the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, in a Total Amount Not to Exceed $642,580.
All right, the motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Ellis, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm going to offer a substitute motion to deny.
All right, it's a substitute motion to deny, seconded by Commissioner Thorne.
Yeah, and, and just for context on this, I mean, I, I've reviewed this, and I, I don't think this is a proper way to bring these types of things forward. I think there are a lot of questionable items on here, you know, if there are chaplains that need to be hired, make them employees, hire them, justify them. If there are consulting contracts, have them bid, show what they are, have them bid out, have meaningful kind of results behind them, et cetera. You know, this is, it's a lot of what was sort of, much of this was some of the stuff that was sort of called out when this, when this fund was called into question and, and we dissolved it, so can't, I can't support continuing it. Thus, a motion to deny.
All right, the motion on the floor is to deny. Substitute motion, all right, let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to deny. And the motion passes, four yeas, three nays.
Next item.
240166, Request Approval to Rescind a Contract for Uniforms and Accessories Awarded to Onyx Inc., LLC.
All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Abdu Rockman, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. On page 10, Under Health and Human Services, 240130, Public Works, Request Approval of the Lowest Responsible Bidder in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000 to Provide the Lowest Responsible Bidder in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000 to Provide Uniforms and Accessories.
All right, a favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 240167, Senior Services, Request Approval of a Change Order Greater Than 10% in an Amount Not to Exceed $227,000 to Provide In-Home Services to Eligible Fulton County Seniors Age 60 and Above.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner, Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Under Justice and Safety, 240168, Medical Examiner, Request Approval to Increase Spending Authority in an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000 for Additional Toxology Testing.
All right, is there a motion? All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Commissioners' Action Items, 240093, Request Approval of Resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners Urging the General, the Georgia General Assembly to Support Legislation Sponsored by the State Senator Donzella James to Amend the Official Code of Georgia to Lift the Ban Relating to Restrictions on Rent Regulations by Local Governments and Allow Counties and Municipalities the Ability to Regulate the Rent to Be Charged for Privately Owned, Single Family, or Multiple-Unit Residential Properties for Those Residing Within the State of Georgia and for Other Purposes. Sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Barrett. Did this make crossover, Ms., it did not? So it's dead, dead for the year then, right? All right, Mr. Hall, you have the floor.
As you all saw, Senator Donzella James came to speak and asked for your support to support her, her bill, which she provided a copy of to everyone, and she said it passed one level already. So regardless, she does want our support in showing that we too want to do something about what's happening in Georgia, in Atlanta, in Fulton County, as it relates to people not being able to afford their rent. Rent is skyrocketing, and people are being evicted. All you have to do is cross the street and go into the courts, and eviction court is packed. And so this is a way to show our support toward the fact that we do not want people to be evicted because of high rents. We want affordable housing. And as Senator James said, she brought this forward because of talking to the youth and talking to the veterans and those who are in need of such a bill. Thanks.
Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hall, I absolutely think this is a conversation we need to have, and I, you know, very much believe in protections for tenants. But to just echo the chairman's question, just to be clear, this did not actually make it to crossover day and did not cross over, correct, Jessica? Okay. So there's no option for this to get passed this year, essentially? Okay. So I do think it's an important conversation. I had some concerns when I was reading it, that it was just very broad, because it took away, you know, what's existing, which I think is important, but there's really no protection going in the other direction for small business landlords, the person who owns a, you know, one or two homes that they're renting out, or something like that. And I just want to make sure that whenever this legislation comes up again, that there's some consideration made for, you know, landlords that might need that protection. So I do want to have, continue to have this conversation. I certainly support Senator James's efforts, but I think the timing on this is off.
Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna support this in theory for Senator James, because I understand where she was trying to go. But let me tell you the problem I have with this. If we are going to, in fact, put in a urging for something having to do with rent and not have the discussion about 19,000 homes being owned by three different companies, we just playing, and we need to stop playing. If you're gonna put in legislation, let's put in legislation that will make sure that first-time homebuyers can buy in Fulton County or other counties, because this has affected all counties. I believe in affordable housing. I believe in people being able to rent. But I also believe that these small homeowners and individuals who own less than 10 houses who have been affected by COVID, who were not receiving rent for two or three years, and some of their properties were foreclosed on, we should have something in place for them. But to have this type of legislation at the state without having the conversation about the monopoly of three companies owning 19,000 houses in the state of Georgia and not having that conversation is a disservice if we're talking about really trying to house individuals and put in affordable housing. So let's not just do stuff for election time. Let's not just do stuff to appease what we consider the red meat of any party. Let's do what's right for all individuals of Fulton County, Gwinnett County, DeKalb County. This is a situation that is epidemic levels that individuals working in Fulton County cannot afford to live in Fulton County. You want to talk about how much they make? They don't make enough money to live in the county in which they work in. So let's, let's, let's have a more detailed conversation at the state and with our state lawmakers. But I will support this on the surface, but not without those comments.
Commissioner Thorne.
I do appreciate Senator Donzella James coming down here today. I appreciate her compassion. And Commissioner Hall, I feel like you really have compassion to, to your constituents. And I'm the same way. I, when I saw that we were, we had a government that was spending money, increasing the money supply into our economy, you knew that was a recipe for inflation, combined with labor shortages and housing shortages. And, and then in turn, to offset the, this record 40-year inflation, the Fed had to raise interest rates. So now the interest rates have more than doubled. So it makes it difficult for people to own homes, for landlords, their costs are going up. But I don't see where rent control has really worked, where it's been successful in any city. I mean, you go to New York, they had multiple rent controls, and, you know, a single apartment without a doorman's $3,500, and the average rent for one with a doorman's $5,500. It doesn't fix the problem. It fixes a symptom of the problem, but it doesn't fix the problem. Fixed rent doesn't encourage new investors to say, oh, jeez, let me come into Atlanta and build some apartment homes, and then I might be told how much rent I can charge. When we have a housing shortage, you don't want to discourage investors from coming in and building more housing. Secondly, if I was a landlord and I was told that I have to keep my rent at a certain level, and my apartment needs upgrading or fixed, I'm not gonna be eager to do that because I'm capped on what I can make. So it leads to deterioration of properties. It leads to economic decline. And then there's the people, and I know some people in New York that just take advantage. They know how to game the system. They get the cheap apartments. And so it's not really going to those people that really need it. It's not going to the students. It's not going to the seniors. It's not going to the veterans. It's the people that know how to game the system. So I believe in common sense compassion, and I agree with Governor Kemp and Mayor Andre Dickens, that we need to address the housing shortage. And that I believe that that's the best thing to do. So that's why I cannot support this urging resolution.
Any other comments? Commissioner Arrington.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote to support this urging resolution, but I do think there is a bigger conversation. And I wonder if allowing local control allows for more opportunities to discriminate against people. But certainly, no one should be facing a 100 or 200% increase in rent. So I think we should really identify, you know, some, maybe, I don't know if there's a floor or a ceiling, but we should be talking about a floor or a ceiling, because certainly no one should, no one's rent should double over, or triple overnight. And then, you know, to some extent, maybe it needs to be tied to the CPI. But people do need relief. It's certainly a worthwhile conversation to have. I just wonder if, you know, completely leaving it up to all local control, I don't, I don't know what that looks like in some places. And so I'd rather have, you know, some type of limits that makes sense and would allow people to not be displaced. So I support it in theory. I guess if it's not going anywhere, it doesn't do any harm to support it. I support the idea, but I do think that there may need some, it may need some more refining.
All right, other comments? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion fails, three yeas, two nays.
Next item.
On page 11, Commissioners Full Board Appointments, 240169, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Regional Advisory Council, Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman has nominated Tara Miller for a full board appointment to a term ending August 1st, 2024.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Abdur-Rahman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. County Managers Presentation and Discussion Items, 240170, External Affairs, Presentation of the 2024 State Legislative Session Update.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jessica Corby, Director of External Affairs. I'd ask the team to please pull the slides up. I don't remember the last time I got to talk to y'all in the morning hours of the day. You have in front of you the printed copy of the deck we're gonna go over, so I'll just go ahead and start, and then we'll catch up in just a moment. We have some really good news that I'll get to in just a moment, but we'll just start with the fact that the governor has already signed the amended FY24 budget that passed out of both houses. And yesterday, the Appropriations Committee passed the FY25 budget, and we were fortunate to see the additional 1.8 million that we were advocating for, for the Behavioral Health Crisis Center included in the budget that was adopted or passed by the Appropriations Committee. So we are very happy to see that development. And the appropriations, excuse me, the full House is expected to vote tomorrow on the FY25 budget, and then it goes to the Senate. Just want to remind her to please pull up our slides. Thank you. This morning, the, thank you. Next slide, please. As usual, just, these are our priorities for FY24 for this session. Next slide. So again, yesterday, appropriations passed the budget with those amendments for the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, a number of other changes. And the full House will vote on the budget tomorrow, and then the Senate will consider it. We have reached out to some of our Senate members on appropriations to let them know that we would appreciate their support with the funding for the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Next slide, please. The delegation will meet this Friday at noon, and they have asked for an update about the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Ms. Foster will be presenting to them. We also had an update to the delegation on the 22nd from our Registration and Elections Team. If you're not able to join in person, there will be a Zoom link available, and we'll provide that when we have it. The last delegation meeting scheduled for this session is next, excuse me, two weeks on March 21st. Next slide. Just wanted to call out, it was very exciting to see our young people here this morning, and wanted to recognize Nathaniel, who advocated for some legislation. Unfortunately, it did not make crossover, but he got some good experience advocating for a bill. He is one of our youth commissioners who came out and spoke with, with Representative Hilton about social media legislation. Next slide. Again, we've already talked about the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, but we are continuing to track that as it goes through the Senate, and again, through tomorrow's House vote. Next slide. I wanted to rec, just highlight Senate Bill 349. This is a bill that we worked on with ACCG that would make a number of changes to the property valuation process, the property assessment, and also addresses the military setting process and the process for addressing rollback rates. It also would implement some statewide homestead, floating homestead exemptions, similar to the one that we already have here in Fulton County. So we're really happy to see this making its way through. It passed the Senate before crossover and now has been assigned to House Ways and Means. So as soon as we see that, have committee hearing, we will make sure to let you all know in case you'd like to attend or monitor that. But we're just continuing to stay engaged with ACCG and appreciate their support. Next slide, please. Also, just wanted to highlight a few bills. We, because there were so many, we sort of included today's presentation as an appendix, but we're just gonna go through some of those that we have really been working on. House Bill 643 is related, one we've talked about before, related to state court judges and their retirement. So that passed the House last week and has now gone to the Senate Retirement Committee. So really appreciate state court for working with us on that, as well as the members who supported that. In December, the Board adopted part of a resolution and sought support to allow Superior Court to assign judicial officers to handle cases other than family law cases, to really increase their capacity. So that legislation is being worked on literally right now as local legislation with legislative councils, so we will keep you all updated about that, and we'll circulate that draft when we have it. Georgia Squatter Reform Act, this has been something that has been in the media quite a bit, the issue of squatters taking on homes that may be unoccupied, and is something that unfortunately, the current law did not really allow for the existing dispository process to address that. So that bill has already made its way through, and we're really excited to see that. Also, there is some legislation related to salary adjustment that is making its way through the process. So we'll keep you all updated about that one as well. Next slide, please. A couple of other priorities that we felt were really, bills that aligned with some of the things that this Board has addressed. House Bill 1339 is primarily addressing certificates of need. House Bill 1339 is primarily addressing certificates of need, but it also creates a comprehensive health coverage commission. One of your priorities is related to healthcare access. And in this particular commission, would be evaluating the needs of uninsured Georgians and healthcare access. So we do think it is promising, and we'll continue to track that as that commission is established. Also have been in touch, this is about really some of the challenges we faced in our jail and in our criminal justice system related to individuals who have been deemed not competent to stand trial. And so Senate Bill 533 would authorize the Georgia DBHDD, give them additional responsibilities in evaluating treatment plans or developing treatment plans for those individuals. So that's something we've asked the Sheriff's Office for feedback. They are supportive of that. We've also shared that with our colleagues in Superior Court, who have been working with the Familiar Faces Initiative and other initiatives related to individuals who are coping with mental illness and who are facing charges in our justice system. Senate Bill 439 would create a new homestead exemption from Atlanta public schools, which really has not traditionally had as many homestead exemptions for seniors compared to most of our other local governments. This would benefit any homeowner age 65 or over and people who earn less than $100,000 a year. That would have to go before a referendum, so we'll keep you all posted about that. But would offer significant property tax relief for Atlanta seniors. Next slide, please. Just a couple of others. At the last meeting, you asked us some questions about sports betting, Mr. Chairman. So these are two of the bills that did cross over that are related to sports betting, Senate Bill 386 and Senate Resolution 579. That one, the second of those, would propose as a constitutional amendment and would assign dollars to the Hope Scholarship and Pre-K programs. So those were, those have already crossed over and have been assigned to committee. So we'll continue to track those. Those were the bills that we wanted to highlight today, but we are glad to take questions. Again, you have sort of an addendum. Next slide, please. And just wanted to call out kind of the calendar that's ahead of us. We are just a couple of weeks from signing die on March 28th. And again, we have a few upcoming delegation meetings that we'll be working on. Tomorrow is ACCG's Legislative Breakfast. Some of you may be planning to attend that. And yes, we'll just, again, be glad to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Arrington.
Just one quick question. On that, do you know on like that Senate Bill 349, all the tax stuff? If that passes this year, does any of it impact the current tax year? Or would it all be the following tax year?
I do not recall the effective date of the, Fran is telling us it's the following tax year. So I think it would be challenging to implement.
Yeah, okay, that's why there's, okay, they're not, none of this would be sought to be implemented. Okay.
It would be effective for next year. Thank you. That's a great question.
Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Superior Court judicial officers, I thought that they entered into an MOU with Magistrate Court and were no longer going to be requesting judicial officers.
It is correct that they have entered into an agreement. That's my understanding. I think, Commissioner Arrington, I think this goes beyond that situation. The, is that, you are, I believe, aware that for the last several years, they have sought through the process of assigning an additional Superior Court judge. They meet the qualifications, but have not had progress in getting an additional judgeship assigned to Fulton County. So the conversation really evolved to what other resources or channels do we have to seek state support? The state has designated this process for assigning judges. We have not been successful in advocating for an additional judgeship. What other resources are available? So this would be a bit different. I think, I think that's the notion, is how could there be additional resources to support them that would not necessarily negate the need for the support that they receive from magistrate court? And once we have the bill, this is a local bill, so it is not subject to the same crossover requirements. Once we have that, we'll be glad to circulate it and get your additional feedback.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. Certainly, I'm in support of getting another judge. I don't know about additional judicial officers. They're just not held to the same standards.
Understood.
In my practice, over the last 27 years in the court system, judicial officers are much more prone to make mistakes than judges. So I think we need to be careful about that.
And I will say, one part of the conversation has been that, that there would be, while they would be potentially able to handle other matters coming before Superior Court, would not have the same responsibility for serious, especially violent felonies or some of those most serious cases. But again, I'll bring that before you. I understand all matters coming before the court are important.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you've got family law and custody issues, and you've got a judicial officer that runs rogue and just issues of order transfer and custody, and you get it set aside the following day or two weeks or a month later. The damage has already been done. Criminal cases doesn't matter. The, 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 we got to be real careful of these judicial officers because they will run rogue, and they will not comply with the law like judges. And I don't know about this squatters act. Then somebody can just give three days' notice and then evict you? I, I don't support that at all. No, ma'am, no. If you are a tenant, you have rights, right? Now, if you are a squatter and you don't have a lease, then that is one thing, right? But if you have a lease, you have rights under that lease. And so certainly, maybe we need to do more to get rid of people that are actually squatting. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, with actual squatters. But amending the law to, to make tenants squatters and not giving them due process of law and proper notice and an opportunity to respond, there is no way in the world that I could support that, not in 100 million years.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think Fran can clarify a bit about, there are some protections for individuals who are proper tenants paying.
That's right. Good morning, Commissioner Arrington. This bill does not apply to persons who have a lease. This is referencing the 1,200 homes or properties that are currently being held by squatters in Fulton County. And those persons do not have a lawful lease and cannot present such. Unfortunately, because of some perceived loopholes in the law, if someone squats on your property today, you have to go through the landlord-tenant disposessory process. That is what is happening.
Unfortunately, that is not true. There is an ejectment procedure that you can go through for the sheriff for ejectment of squatters.
Yes, sir.
Which is, and so maybe the bill doesn't do that, but this, this summary, maybe we need to tweak our summary of the bill. Because the summary states, "From having to seek a landlord-tenant form a disposessory court action for illegal possession of their home, the bill clarifies and treats the illegal possession of another's residential property as criminal trespassing." So maybe it's just our description in the document that, that, that is not completely accurate.
We'll go back and revisit the summary. We are aware of the ejectment process. That is not being followed in most cases, is what we are learning. And this is from cases that have come to both the court and those coming to the General Assembly to testify. And so please note that this is not, we'll provide the language of the bill, but it is not intended to in any way hamper the legalities under a landlord-tenant agreement. Those are considered legal agreements. But if a property that is vacant at the time, we've had, and there have been media stories in fact, and we'll share all of this offline.
Veterans coming home and someone's in there.
That's exactly right, sir. And they were not allowed, for some reason, you know, in our law department, our county attorney's office has also looked into this. And they see where there is, of course, the ejectment procedure. We're not sure why it is that law enforcement has hedged on this and felt like they didn't have the ability, in fact, to move forward on it. So it, it was a lengthy discussion.
So I know our sheriff has conducted some ejectments pursuant to that statute. Again, that process might need to be reformed. I don't know that it's perfect as it, as it is written, right? I think there are still some loopholes in the way that it's written. So the process may need to be perfected. But what's important for me to know and understand is that this does not affect any existing landlord-tenant relationship. This is only for those people that, where there is no landlord-tenant relationship.
That is correct. And I will add that we were grateful to have our Marshals Office to come and testify and to actually help clean up the legislation so as to address some of the loopholes. And we'll share that with you as well, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then now I want to talk about House Bill 1339, and this revises certificate of need requirements. Tell, tell me what that means, because we need a whole bunch of certificate of needs in Fulton County. So tell me exactly what that means and how it's relevant to the residents of Fulton County.
Forgive me, Commissioner Arrington. Your question about the comprehensive, the certification of need?
Yes, certificates of need, House Bill 1339. It says it revises certificate of need requirements. And so I want to know what, how, what, what are the revisions? And how are those revisions beneficial to the residents of Fulton County?
This would be in the rural areas of Fulton County. It really would not impact these larger areas, but we'll certainly provide a memorandum for you on that as well.
Okay, yeah, because I got, I got rural areas in Palmetto and Chattahoochee Hills and city of South Fulton and Faribault that need, I mean, we need certificate of needs. So I, you know, I don't, if there's an opportunity and people are talking about certificate of needs, and we don't need one, we need multiple.
Commissioner, it does ease some of those requirements. And so we'll, we'll provide a memorandum with all of the elements of that.
Thank you.
And Commissioner, I just wanted to mention that the reason that we highlighted this one was really about the commission that will be examining access for uninsured. But I think it's bundling those two issues together, looking at needs for uninsured folks, as well as the certificate of need reform or changes, depending on perspective. So we'll, we'll bring back more information for you.
And, and the reason the certificate of need is important, I know, as I know you all already know, we can't get another hospital without a certificate of need.
No, understand for sure.
And we don't need one hospital, we need multiple.
Understand.
So we need multiple certificate of needs. And so if there is a discussion going on, we want to be at the table letting them know that we need multiple certificates of need.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thorne?
Can I just get some clarification? Did we, didn't we approve a resolution requesting Superior Court judicial officers?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Okay, so we're advocating for that.
That's correct. We have worked, that was based on the vote that the board took on December 20th.
Okay, I just need a little clarification. And you didn't go, you didn't, another topic, you didn't really go over all the election bills?
You're right, Commissioner, we did not. One of the bills that we, there are many of them, and we can kind of take a look at that. It starts on page 20 of the presentation. But one of the ones, one of the election issues that we had specifically supported was related to allowing superintendents to determine the number of voting booths. We hoped that this would allow us to address voter patterns where we've seen a high increase in participation in early voting. That bill did not cross over. But, and I will kind of go through these just on their surface. And if there are many questions, we will follow up on these. But there are many specific processes, I guess is the best way to say it, within the election process that have been addressed by the legislature this year. So I'll start with the top here on the list that's before us. Many people don't know that at the end of the election process, there are digital images created when we scan our ballots through our current voting system. And so this would increase the resolution for the posting of those scanned paper ballots and would maintain a statewide program there. There is also a requirement related to the paper of, that is used for printing ballots on security paper that would include a visible watermark. So if there are questions about, I guess, the veracity of a ballot, that that specific watermark would be used and would deem that as an official ballot. There's also, I guess, legislation about risk-limiting audits. And kind of has, I don't know that I could speak to this one in great detail, but would allow, provide some additional provisions there. And again, that is a process that we go through. The Secretary of State's office calls, will deem a risk-limiting audit after many elections. And that is a very, a process that we have gone through a number of times. House Bill 1207 is one that we've heard issues about before. And this would require election superintendents to send a ballot proof to the candidates and for those candidates to verify their information within 24 hours of receipt. Next slide, please. Yeah, please, yeah, go for it. Go back one slide, please.
No, no, we're, we're fine right here. House Bill 1370, no, thank you so much. Commissioner Thorne, I wanted to simply just add a footnote to what Jessica mentioned. This bill did not cross over, but it is a challenge for many counties and not just Fulton County. And in consultation with ACCG, they are still advocating for this language to be added to bills that have crossed over and have a likelihood of passage. This is a huge administrative burden for our elections department, since about 70% of our residents vote early. And so having this flexibility in the law means a great deal to our department, as well as many others that also experience that same phenomenon. And so I just wanted to put that footnote there to let you know, we're still advocating for that.
So there's a potential to have an omnibus bill that this will all kind of get rolled into?
We suspect that we're going to see an omnibus bill at the end anyway. And so even if it does not, you know, appear where you've got so many different parts of the title included, this language, ACCG is going to at least try to spearhead to get it on one that is tracking and likely to pass.
Okay, because I'm greatly disappointed that it didn't cross over because I just look at it as a huge burden to staff every election as if it's a presidential election on Election Day and to do the logic and accuracy testing to, on all the equipment from... from the BMDs to the poll pads, to the scanners, to the printers, everything, and then to staff it. And I had an election one time, it was a runoff for an Alpharetta city councilman, and I had 30 people come, yet I had to staff it like it was a presidential election. So I'm glad, keep pushing on it, I hope that does get through.
Right, we understood that this was a huge priority for the board, and so they have agreed to continue working with us to push that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. And thank you, Commissioner, for that question. And so the other three on this list, one is related to Senate Bill 189, excuse me, is the only one that crossed over. And this bill would eliminate the use of QR codes on paper ballots and would provide for the text of that ballot to be the official vote for purposes of tabulation. There has been one attempted, an omnibus election bill that did not cross over, so we suspect we'll see some changes. And again, we've often, I, we've often seen that in the last several years related to election bills. And then Senate Bill 413 makes some changes for dates for elections. So again, this one did not, and also would affect sales tax referenda, but that one did not cross over. But as Fran said, we may, we may see a revisit of that at the end.
I understand in the Fulton County delegation meeting, there was some talk about one of the bills requiring all election workers to be U.S. citizens. Did that go anywhere or is that in a bill somewhere?
I think that was Senate Bill 221, that was a.
The omnibus one?
Yes, yeah, it had numerous different, which one now?
H R 780, that did not cross over.
Okay, H R 780 is what Jasmine's mentioning, it also mentioned that language. Want to come up? It did not cross over.
Okay.
Yeah, she's got the house side.
And if there aren't any other questions, Chairman, we will see you in two weeks.
Okay, just a minute.
Oh, yes, sir.
On page 18, under transportation, I'm surprised that the bill to abolish the ATL did not cross over. But I mean, with the governor's support and Representative Jones, I don't see, are they going to attach it to something else?
That's a great question, Chairman. We were, we were also surprised because we understood that the governor supported it. So, you know, I'm sure there are some discussions ongoing about this and we'll keep an eye on that, but we were also surprised.
Mr. Chairman, I did reach out to the executive director, and she did not know of any plans to attach it to anything else, but they're still monitoring that bill.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page 12, 240171, discussion boards, authorities, committees, and task forces sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Commissioner Arrington. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, we need to look at, and in particular, we still have a lot of boards and authorities, and we need to look at all our boards and authorities, we know that, we're already talking about that. But in particular, we have some that haven't met in two or three years that we can't get rid of because they're only in the unincorporated area. And so we need either the City of South Fulton or the City of Atlanta. I thought there would have been a deal worked out where the City of South Fulton was going to get up to I-20 and City of Atlanta was going to get everything on the other side of I-20. But the City of Atlanta never got the other side of I-20. And so we still have these other code enforcement boards, zoning boards, and there's really nothing going on because the only area is, you know, seven tenths of a mile on Fulton Industrial. And so, I don't know if something could be done about it this session or not. Apparently, it doesn't matter if it crossed over or not, it could just be added to another bill. So crossover doesn't mean nothing if it could just be added to something else. So we need the City of Atlanta or the City of South Fulton to get the remaining unincorporated land in Fulton County because it makes no sense for us to still be providing services for that small of an area. City of South Fulton, I think, got theirs two or three years ago up to I-20, and City of Atlanta has not gotten the rest of the land. So we, you know, we've got to, I think, we need to push for that. Again, there's no reason for us to be providing services out there.
And thank you, Commissioner Arrington, I can give a little bit of history. I think it's two sessions ago, we had discussion with our counterpart, the City of Atlanta, to ask what the city's posture was, if they, because we wanted to be able to prepare. In the past, it has often been the cities themselves who have advocated for those annexations by legislation. And in our conversations with the city at that point, I think on two different sessions, we were advised that they were undertaking some service delivery study and were not planning to move forward at that time. So we have not seen the city initiate that annexation by legislation. If the board, if this board has a position on that, we are glad to work with their delegation.
I bet City of South Fulton want that land. If the City of Atlanta doesn't want it, I guarantee City of South Fulton could use an extra commercial tax base. So if the City of Atlanta doesn't want it, then we just need to encourage City of South Fulton to try to get it because, again, it makes no sense for us to provide, continue to provide services, to have task force and boards that are required by law to have out there that haven't met in two or three years because there's no zoning going on. There's no, there are no codes to enforce because there's little to no people there. So I guess there probably are some codes to enforce, but. So I'll just leave it there, I've said my piece on it. And frankly, I don't care if it goes to Atlanta or to South Fulton, but it needs to go to one of them. And if Atlanta doesn't want it, it sounds like South Fulton is the obvious choice. Okay, Commissioner Ellis?
I would just say, I would respectfully disagree. I do think that we've got the capacity to do it, and I think we've come up with a good plan to do it, and it's not particularly heavy load as respects these boards and task forces associated with it, well, the shared admitting task force associated with it. But if there are any, you know, maybe that's something that we can have our county attorney look into, is there, I mean, there are plenty of small cities and small jurisdictions around. You know, are there alternatives that we could consider as opposed to the way we have those, those particular boards set up? Could we dissolve those and move to some alternative way to deal with the issues that they otherwise would have dealt with?
Okay, at the, you'll recall at the off-site retreat, Commissioner Barrett, the clerk and the county attorney were tasked with dealing with this. So where are we?
So you're on that task force too, sir.
I signed.
All due respect. I know, I'm teasing you. We, we've spoken, our departments have spoken, and there's a couple of things. We did hear back from the county attorney's office, and there's a slight delay in getting their full analysis back. We were hoping to get it by the beginning of this month, but because of the, some of the events we've been dealing with here in the county, it's been delayed a little bit. So I think the timing is now mid-March.
We expect to have it by March 18th.
And that should be, that, just to be clear, Madam County Attorney, that's a full sort of look at all of.
Inventory of all of our boards and authorities so that you can take a look at them.
As well as all of the, sort of, the legislation so that we can look at where we can sort of make it more uniform, correct? Okay. And as far as the clerk and I have spoken at great length, this is why I had held up a couple of times that software, just to make sure that it was going to meet our needs for this specific issue, not the rest of what that software was for. We do think that it will, and I think the process, once we have the status from the county attorney's office and we start the process of implementing the new software, and again, I'm not sure, and this is maybe a Kevin question as well, but where we are timeline on that because of everything else that's going on, I think we'll have a better handle on tracking all of that, who's meeting, when, how, and why. So we're making progress is the long answer. But I think because of everything else that's been going on over the last several weeks, things are slightly delayed, but we're making progress. But that brings up another question, Mr. Chairman. We had talked about meeting again on the rules and such after this meeting today, but we didn't schedule it because of everything that's going on. Do we want to reschedule that for?
We can talk about.
The next meeting? Okay, thank you.
And I volunteered for that as well because I've been the main one talking about boards, authorities, and task force over the last five years. So it'd be the two of us, Commissioner Arrington, clerk, and county attorney?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Madam County Clerk, continue.
Next item, item that was moved up, 240173, discussion and approval of back-to-work plan pre-COVID, sponsored by Chairman Pitts.
Okay, Mr. Manager, you have a presentation on this. I mean, unlike, I mean, well, not unlike, but like other governmental entities as well as private corporations, everybody's having a discussion about this policy, and we need to take a position because we're all over the board here. Some departments never come to work, others are here all day, every day, and the result of all of that is probably half of this building is vacant. So Mr. County Attorney, strike that, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. When we talked, you asked for also a consideration of a brief update on our cyber incident. Would you like for me to do that?
Correct, yeah, let's start with that.
Yes, sir. To date, we've had no release of sensitive data or any further threats to do so. It doesn't guarantee that, it wouldn't happen in the future, but we have that to report. Telephony access has been established, and we're continuing to ensure that all the phones are configured now. At this time, all departments have phone access. We're prioritizing main phone lines to ensure public access. Our early remediation work is largely complete. Our forensic investigation continues, and we look forward to getting reports at the end of that work. Our water billing system is back online. In fact, I made my own payment vis-à-vis that system, so customers can safely make their payments now online as well as in person. We're continuing to make progress on what we've been talking about as our big three systems, tax, court, and ERP. The tax system, I think, is the closest to being fully restored, it's in final testing. And again, great kudos to Dr. Ferdinand Rodney as well as their staffs in terms of the work that they've put in on this. I think the last piece is again on the electronic payment side, but the rest of that system looks fully functional. Again, reminder, we have moved that to the vendor's environment, further hardening and protecting that system from future intrusions. The court system is also being worked now, so all the data has been uploaded, been tested by Tyler and loaded into their environment. There is a punch list that of essentially functionality that's being worked on, that's been cut in half since the outset. So I think that is making progress, do not have an estimated date, but again, appreciate the work of all the court system partners on that. And then the ERP system is working. The long pole in the tent there is a VPN access that will allow us to fully scale up to the number of users that we previously had, which is in excess of 300. We're in the single digits now, which is what has constrained many of the things that, of course, we've come to expect in terms of budgets and being able to hire and promote folks. So hopefully that will be in short order in place. We know of no technical reasons why that, why that won't be the case, but there could be some, some new issues identified as that scales. We want to note again that elections continues unabated, that process has not been affected from the, from the outset. Voters may continue to participate in early voting, which they are doing, as well as Election Day voting as normal. We're also preparing a case study that will highlight many of the lessons learned, including close coordination with law enforcement, great counsel from our county attorney as well as cyber counsel, the communications effort that we put into this, the workarounds, and the technology resources that we use from a cadre of external firms that had great expertise in this area. We hope to share those lessons with others, certainly with the public, but also with sister governments. I've reached out to Dave Wills at ACCG, and he welcomes that, that effort. I want to thank again Kevin Carrigan and Joe Bearaswayne from our IT and EMA organizations who have been daily leading this effort and nightly as well, as well as all the folks on their staff and frontline employees that step forward, and every department that has had to find ways to work around, again, I want to say that again, how much that's appreciated. Another couple of reminders that from a public perspective, our webpage, FultonCountyGA.gov/cyberResponse is the best place for updates for any and all of these services. And then residents who have ongoing needs can either email us at customerservice@FultonCountyGA.gov or call our main customer service line, 404-612-4000. So much to, to say thanks over, Mr. Chairman. Again, we're a little over a month into this now, this happened on January the 28th. These sometimes last for months and months, as we all know, but I think we're closing in on a, really a forced march through the next month to come to full restoration. Madam Clerk, if you will, you have.
Mr. Manager, before you, any update on the, on the coverage that we're supposed to be getting?
I don't have an update, but for exactly on the timing of this, but for the benefit of the board and the public, we understand that there will be a 60 Minutes segment done on cybersecurity in general, interviewing an assistant director at the FBI. Fulton County will be mentioned based on what we, we know, we don't know everything that will be said, I hope it's certainly positive. And I think it will be, given our close coordination with law enforcement was instrumental to this, to this response. So it could be this Sunday night, and I'll make the board aware as soon as I'm advised as to when that date of airing will be.
Christian Hall, you have a question for the manager on this cyber deal?
No, I have a question on the document on page five.
And is that in the presentation, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready to start that, Mr. Chairman, if you're. So what we're going to do is really an integrated presentation, you'll see how these, these work together. Just a reminder, when we, which certainly seems like eons ago, but when we were back in the days of COVID, and in fact, I went and dusted off one of the, one of the presentations, it was April 21 of 2021, again, it sounds like a long time ago. But that's when we shared with the board our overall return to office and return to work strategy. As you remember, during that period of time, we took enormous leverage, or we found enormous leverage in technology. So just to remind you a few of the things that we did, we invested 17 million to scale up the ability for hybrid and remote work. We planned another 10 million in investment subsequent to that initial 17 million. We expanded our network access from one gig to seven gig. We put in almost 4,500 new laptops and PCs. One of the reasons, again, I think our recovery is shorter than normal was that investment in new desktop devices. We enabled 58 digital courtrooms from zero, 7,000, or excuse me, 700 Zoom accounts were put in place. Most importantly, to this discussion, we developed departmental plans for reentry to the, to the office. We had HR review over 900 classifications, 515 were approved with work flexibility in terms of either remote or hybrid. We looked closely, of course, at the CDC guidelines at the time, it was still emphasizing social distancing and mask at that point. We did decide to reopen this room, as you all remember. As we walked through, again, department by department with the Board of Commissioners, each department had a plan that designated how many people were planning to be in the office five days a week, how many would be on a hybrid basis, and how many would be remote. So in that, again, presentation, you saw all of that, all that information presented. Since that time, one of the things that's, I guess, become more and more obvious is the hybrid work environment based on Gallup surveying 20-something thousand people and then 1,800 or so every two months is very much here to, here to stay. In fact, the, of remote capable, and that's a term of art now, workers meaning that if you're able to work remotely, obviously, if you're a police officer, a detention officer in our jail, someone in Joe Davis's organization that's doing building maintenance, you may not have that ability. But if you're an office worker doing. But if you're an office worker doing that kind of work, generally speaking, now, less than 20% of those folks work full-time in the office. And the projection is, based on a Gallup survey, that over the next year or two, less than 10% will work full-time in the office. So just something to consider. We'll show you, as we get into this presentation, how this fits together in the sense of, we were very deliberate in teeing up for the board investments, both in the office space here at our downtown headquarters, and then also in the IT environment. You have approved both of those investments, if you recall, the office space one in the last meeting, and perhaps the IT one in the meeting before that. But that will generally modernize our office space and our ERP systems. The one snag in this overall plan is the cost of construction has gone through the roof since these original investments. So what we thought was a reconfiguration of every space in this building to support, again, remote work, hybrid work, and with an overall goal that we established and the board was very aware of, of no more than 50% returning any one day into this building. The complication is, that was a $28 million project that, when the bids were received, was over $75 million. So what we'll discuss today is how we have retooled that approach to give some of the biggest part of that benefit still, which was moving customer functions, customer-facing functions to the first and second floor, securing the elevators going up beyond that, moving all of the folks from 137 Prior to the library, which would give them back space for a hybrid approach, because today, they have been moved out remotely where we can house Justice Partners at 137 Prior. 137 Prior then would be available for either sale or use by our Justice Partners. And that all being said, the biggest benefit that we do not get by the investment required to resize all of the space and not have any more than 50% is the ability to reduce leasehold space for the DA, the public defender, and the tax assessor. And of course, many of you have asked about that, so that's still out there as a yet-to-do, and we'll have to discuss financially how best to approach that, because I think there's still benefit, and, Mr. Chairman, you've just pointed out in your opening, that there is space available to do so. So the question is, how do we financially prepare this building to be able to accommodate that? So what we're going to do is, Joe and Tim have worked hugely on this. It's a very simple plan, but I want to make sure that you see it, about the movement of the space, and then I'll pick back up and talk about, again, the status of a hybrid remote work environment. So Joe, let me turn it to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Previous slide, two slides back. There we go. So Commissioners, we're pleased to provide you with this overview of the project that the county manager has just talked about, and as you are aware, the department dream brought to you at the last board meeting, a recommendation for approval of a proposal that resulted from a design build RFP that was issued on August the 10th. We received two proposals on October the 11th. As Mr. Anderson has indicated, we established a project budget initially of $28 million. Unfortunately, when we received the two bids, both bids were in excess of $75 million, which then forced us to work with the qualified bidder or selected bidder to value engineer the project in terms of scope so that we could adjust the projected cost to the actual $28 million budget available. Next slide, please. So ultimately, the original scope of work intended to relocate Health and Human Services operations to the Central Library from 137 Peachtree, along with moving the Arts and Culture Main Office out of this building and that of Behavioral Health over to the Central Library as well. It also included renovating all floors in the 141 Prior Street Building to meet a new set of space standards, as the county manager indicated, at a occupancy rate of no more than 50% of staff on site any given day. The biggest outcome of this project originally was to consolidate all public-facing operations onto the first and second floor, that is, the Prior and Peachtree levels of this building, as well as it including renovations of all spaces with those new space standards. Due to the value engineering, we've had to refocus our efforts and look at the number one priority that we had, which is to move all customer-facing functions down to the first, second, and third floor of this building, and then also to move Health and Human Services to the Central Library. Next slide, please. So here you'll see just a couple of bullet points as it relates to the relocation priorities. You'll see that the 137 Peachtree Building, which houses senior services, HIV elimination, and housing and community development, those will be moving to the Central Library, along with the Behavioral Health offices and Arts and Culture offices that are here in the government center also moving to the Central Library. We consider this a critical relocation priority. Next slide, please. So, we talked about, one of our principal goals was moving public-facing units down to lower floors so that we didn't have members of the public going into higher staff occupied levels. To that end, we looked at the principal forward-facing operations and then determined by mapping their space needs to our proposed plan and came up with these highlights here. The Board of Equalization will be moving from the fifth floor to the second floor, Suite 2085, which is currently occupied by the District Attorney's Office. Will be moving the finance-water-payment window from the seventh floor down to the second floor. The Police Department, currently residing on the fourth floor for their reporting and fingerprinting operations, will be moved down to the second floor. The District Attorney Records Office, which is currently on the second floor, is going to move down to the first floor adjacent to the Vital Records Office. The thinking is, records retrieval by the public, they can all go into one location to do that. And we're also intending to create some hoteling, HR training, and/or procurement offices to the second floor as well in the space that is currently the old cafeteria. Next slide, please. Other priorities that we decided we needed to focus on, as you all may remember, we did a massive restroom renovation and ADA renovation on multiple floors in this building as well as the Justice Center. The intent of this project is to also address the remaining restrooms that was not covered in that procurer program project. We will also be renovating the elevator lobbies on all floors from 3 through 10. We are also exploring the possibility of securing the elevator lobbies to add an additional layer of security to the floors where only staff are actually going to be as a result of this project. We will be updating the 10th floor. As you know, we began with the Commissioners' Conference Room, and we'll be doing that throughout the rest of the floor. And ultimately, we're going to utilize any excess space so that we can eliminate current leased space and cost. That would include the tax assessor's office, the public defender, and the district attorney. And then ultimately, after all those relocations are made and we've evaluated excess space, hopefully, we'll be able to position ourselves to use 137 Peachtree for Justice Agency expansion, or, as the county manager indicated previously, potential sale. Next slide. We'll pause here for any questions, or if the county manager.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, thank you, Joe. So any questions on these moves? And I don't know if Commissioner Hall, if this was where your question was, but are there any questions on this part of the presentation?
I'm actually going to go back to page three, the revised scope of work to move Health and Human Services to the Central Library. And my only question here is, did you work out the parking? Because I remember previous conversations about moving them there, and there were some talks with the parking that's across the street from the library and trying to do some type of partnership to maybe get some additional parking through them. So have you worked that out? Because I know that there's limited parking underneath the building.
You are correct, Commissioner, very limited parking at the facility. So when we decided to make this move, we looked at two different things, well, maybe three. So number one is, across the street is the Peachtree Center Motor Station. So we know for those individuals that were interested in public transit, they would be put out right there at the building. The second thing that we thought about, there is adjacent parking, private parking around the building, less than a block away. Our goal is to negotiate with those owners in the same fashion that we do with linear parking for underground, to get a discounted rate for our county employees. So those are the principal two things that we looked at as it relates to parking for our staff.
All right. And I was glad to see the updating of the 10th floor. My mind immediately went to this one roach that lives in the ladies' bathroom, and it's, I'm sorry, it bothers me. So I'm looking forward to an update. That roach comes out of that drain often. And then just the residents in my district who utilize our services and come to this building always ask about parking and hours, those are their two, the two things that give them angst, are, they try to park on the street and, you know, and they don't know how long it's going to take them when they come in the building to take care of their business, and the parking runs out, and it's just that, and then the hours. Many of them say, you know, why don't we have extended hours? Because many people work nine to five, and they cannot come here during those hours. And a lot of our seniors say, they don't do business online, so why do we not have extended hours? So just those two things to consider. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington?
Looks like the agenda item says pre-COVID, assuming it's post-COVID.
No, I didn't do the agenda item.
Right, yeah. It's probably just a typo. Obviously, we're post-COVID.
Yeah. I think that was a typo. All right. Joe, just hang up, hang up there if you don't mind. All right, so we'll move to page seven. So I'm going to give a brief update on the work environment itself. Some of these things I've already said, so I won't belabor that, but, you know, obviously when.
Wait a minute, before you do that, how are you going to pay for all this stuff up to one through six?
So that's what was approved in the last meeting. It's, we designated $28 million in ARPA funding for this building reconfiguration.
And that's going to include the 10th floor and that escalator?
Yes, sir.
And the timeline?
Joe?
So, as you know, there's going to be a lot of moving parts with this project. Not only is it going to entail coordinating access for our vendors, as well as ongoing moving in and out of the facility, we believe that this project will take approximately a year, probably a little bit more, but ultimately, we are sticking to our guns with regards to expending the money by the deadline to expend ARPA funds, which is, I believe, December 31st of 2026, of 2026.
All of this will be done by 2026?
Yes, sir. No choice.
Mr. Barrett?
Just a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Arrington.
Sorry. Yeah, just a quick question. On the renovations within the building in particular, I hate to say it, on the 10th floor, but is there anything being done just to check on air quality and the air quality systems? Because I just have some concerns on that front.
So, we always have the capability to do indoor air quality checks. We have vendors on standby contracts for that. There's no aspect of HVAC as a part of this project. However, if you have a concern, I can certainly get with our team members to do what we call informal indoor air quality survey, just to get a sense.
We will talk to you offline. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a, not necessarily a question, but an observation. We have constituents on both sides of the county that would like accessibility for a certain amount of departments to be available in the annexes, and so have we looked at that? Have we done any type studies? Most of the constituents that I speak with and the seniors have no desire to come downtown. They will come downtown as needed, but they really would like to utilize the annexes to the best of their ability. So, county manager, do we have an idea of the workspaces and if there maybe is an opportunity to do any expansion on both sides or to add any needed departments in the annexes?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Are you specifically referring to Health and Human Services or all services?
All services, not necessarily that all services need to be in the annex. But do we have an idea of any areas that may could be expanded on per the need as opposed to driving the individuals downtown? That's kind of the.
So, yes, ma'am.
Direction I'm coming from.
So I can speak from the HHS perspective. We are moving forward with the 4,700 footprint. As you know, that facility was purchased. We repurposed it for the COVID response. Post-COVID, we are moving forward with establishing that as an HHS North, and where we are with that is reworking the HVAC, and then we'll move forward with establishing that. We have also, in the South, we are moving forward with a project manager to complete the feasibility study for the South to determine what is the best location for an HHS South, and we will establish services so that we have a central location for HHS services, a north location, and a south location.
Thank you for that, because I think as we reimagine how the work environment will be, we probably need to look at reimagining how those services will either increase or decrease depending on the need. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. So on page seven, really is what I've already said, so I won't belabor this, but again, we leaned into this in the pre-COVID or during the COVID period and did develop these strategies, again, of the, no more than 50%, the increase in VPN, updated teleworking policy, and then this allocation of $28 million to enable this facility. Page eight is new information. This is where we have very recently looked at our workforce in office, hybrid, and remote. And as you can see from this, 90-plus percent of our workforce is either in the office five days a week or in a hybrid format, meaning they're in the office two to three days a week. There's about 2,850 employees, so 63% of the workforce that report to work every single day in an office or a facility. Again, some of these are the obvious ones that would come to mind, like detention officers, but there are others as well across the spectrum where being in the office is very, very important and critical. There's 31% of our workforce, 1449, that do work in a hybrid environment, and in those situations, we find that there is the ability for work to be done using the technology outside the office, but also there's an important component, either for development, team building, culture, to have those folks in the office two to three days a week, and that we leave up to the department head to designate and manage. And then there's about 5% or 250 or so workers that are in a fully remote status, and they do range across all departments, so it's not in any one single department. And then the obvious statement, there are many that are high-touch direct citizen contact, like libraries, senior centers, courts, Behavioral Health, the jail, where we're returning to the normal posture meant being in the office. The pie chart kind of captures that. Next chart, please. We did go out and look at two things, both large corporate employer status as well as government. This is what we found, again, best that we could. UPS is the most notable one that is requiring folks to come back to the office that were remote capable five days a week. Again, they're also, at the same time, reducing management 15% and under a lot of financial stress. Whether or not those two things go together, I don't know, but I do know they're somewhat of an outlier. Home Depot has, you know, stated that they have a hybrid approach, remote and in-office. They also obviously have their store operations, which are very much there five, well, seven days a week. days a week. Delta has both in-office and remote. Of course, all of their call center operations now are generally remote and from home. Coca-Cola, at least in terms of what we could pick up and understand, is more of a hybrid setup where they strive to be together three days a week, but that is not necessarily in the office, can be in the field with their bottlers, can be with customers. And by the way, that's some of where our hybrid workers are also. For example, in arts, they may very well be in the community, not necessarily in the office, but they are clearly engaged in the work of Fulton County. So we did look at, then, governments. If you'll just go to the next chart, Madam Clerk. We had Ken Herman reach out and ask each of the five primary metro counties their status. These are the numbers that came back, again, compared against the ones for us that I just shared with you. Atlanta, 70, 15%, 70% onsite, 15% remote, 15% hybrid. DeKalb, 75% onsite, 25% hybrid. Cobb, 60, 40, between onsite and hybrid. Englenet, 72, 28. And again, hybrid ranging from one to three. The Gallup article that I sent you noted 2.6 days as the average for a hybrid worker. Next page, please. You know, from our, from management's perspective, the benefits of the current model is we think it does allow for competitive recruitment and retention. In other words, we would be a huge outlier if we were in the office five days a week. The hybrid model, we think, does work. We've seen no trade-offs in terms of productivity or development, but we do pay attention to, you know, the need to collaborate, have people in. And again, at the departmental or the department head level, those decisions are made and I think are working well. The hoteling does maximize the use of existing space. Again, that's where, until we reorder every floor in this building, we find the capital money to do that, we don't have as much benefit from being able to eliminate the leased space that I referred to. For example, the tax assessor was one that we had planned all along as a first mover from Peachtree Center to here, which I think makes no sense for them to be there, talking about citizen complications with parking and the like. But nonetheless, years ago, they were moved to that space. But until such time, we figure out the financials of this, we have to keep them there. They would be the first to move. But I think the DA and public defender also would benefit from being here versus, again, in leased space. And then last, on this Gallup survey, as I've mentioned, if you're in a remote capable work, only two or 10 now are fully onsite, and the survey said 80% of Fortune 500 have no plans to decrease that flexibility despite what UPS has done. And then we put a chart for your reference that shows that even out into the future. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our plan, how we got to this plan, and how we've implemented it in terms of the remote worker slash hybrid worker environment.
So do you have a, I mean, what's your recommendation of
Yes, sir.
So you want some direction?
Our recommendation would be to stay the status quo. In other words, I think we have used the technology, we've adopted a, more or less a remote worker hybrid environment where applicable and where it works. The majority of our employees are in the office five days a week, where that, again, is most beneficial. We have very few people that are in a remote setting. And then the last recommendation, I think, would be to, when the timing is appropriate financially, bring back a more comprehensive view of not only this side of the street, but also the justice side of the street as it relates to how you would reconfigure those offices. And again, that would require, I think, another bond issue for us to successfully do. There's no way we could absorb it in the current financials, but for the long term, that would be the best approach to our office space utilization.
So does the, on page 11, that one to the third bullet point, we talked about 50% of employees being, at any given point in time, the building would be half empty?
Well, the way I would say it is, any point in time, yes, 50% of the employees are here, so technically you could say it's then half empty. The problem, yeah, the problem, the only thing I would say, the problem is, it's been years since we did any kind of reconfiguration and optimization of floor space. So I don't know if the floors are as 50% empty might imply are quite that available, I'll say it that way.
Just for personal observation, it's probably 50% or more. I'm here every day. And there's some floors, it's like, I got in trouble with Dr. Paxton when I said you could shoot a cannon through, what is that?
You were talking about where we're putting the behavioral health crisis?
Yeah, she didn't like that.
That's the name?
You observed the same thing.
O'Keel.
Yeah, O'Keel.
Yes, sir.
So at any given point in time, it's half empty. All right, Commissioner, Vice Chair Abdo Rockman?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your leadership on this, as well as County Manager, thank you, and your department. I think, looking at surrounding governments, and that's what I've been looking at, and the model they have been moving to has been this. I think in order for us to really look out, I would say for the next five to 10 years, the retention rate is higher for those that are willing to offer a certain amount of hybrid. That's reality. That is not going anywhere. We have data to back that up. And so I just want to openly say I commend you all for doing that because we already have several governments that have already moved to that model. But we have corporations that have been doing it and have decided that in the long run, when it comes to efficiency, when it comes to retention, and when it comes to space utilization, it is the best model. And so I appreciate what you all are showing here today, and I thank you for it.
Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sort of, I agree with Vice Chair Abdo Rockman. I think what we're doing is very important for us to be competitive and to not, you know, we have hard enough sometimes to get people to fill jobs in the various departments. And so I think this is very much needed. And just to make sure that everybody's clear on this idea that the building, I agree that the building does feel empty right now, for sure, but it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Manager, if we had the money to do all the renovations we wanted, it's not that the building would be 50% empty, it's that we would have 50% of employees at their desks, at their office on any given day, but the building would be full because of the hoteling and other departments moving in and that kind of thing, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And of course, if we did everything we wanted, we'd be moving big swaths of people here that don't currently reside here, like the tax assessor.
And so really, it's, if we were able to, you know, have those contracts come in at the 28 million we had hoped for versus over 75 million, we would be well on our way to making all these things happen.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's really just a financial question right now.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess the only other question I have, which just comes from, you know, having to be scrappy sometimes on my own home renovation choices, is there anything that we can do that isn't that, that will help us bring people back? Is there a way to just sort of rearrange some of the current office spaces without a lot of expense, at least short-term, to move some folks back in a maybe less than optimal, but good enough scenario?
As we go into the planning process for the project, that is actually going to be a part of the overall development of the final design that we get permitted and act upon in terms of construction. It will take into consideration opportunities to optimize space in the building.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Natalie Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to go back to revisit the conversation that we've had over the past couple of years about space utilization by our nonprofit partners. Since we're looking at the fact that there could be spaces that would be empty, we have so many nonprofit partners who have asked over the years, well, actually over the past 13 years that I've been here, about working in our locations because it would help them be closer to the people that we all serve, Fulton County and those partners. And I brought this up some time ago about Adams County in Colorado and how they repurposed their government center, and they actually put their nonprofit partners in a space altogether, which made the work for the people so much more fluid. And also, they had some coworking space that was utilized as well in their government center. They also offered space for Dollar, they had, you know, that type of agreement. And you can kind, you can look at Industrious, which has opened a lot of different coworking spaces across Atlanta and across Fulton County, from Midtown to Buckhead and all around. They have a very good model here, and they just opened up a new office in the space that's right by the old Fourth Ward Historic Park. I want to, I'm very happy about this hybrid current workforce survey because in the late 90s, I have to pay homage to the CIO back then, his name was Tom Cullen. He was very open to new technology and creating the division that I headed up with, the late employee who was a telecommunications manager, Larry Lyle, and the late admin, Sharon Williams, and other outstanding IT employees, because back then, we started a teleworking pilot project, but it was to address the smog in air quality in the state of Georgia and specifically in Atlanta and Fulton County. And we worked very closely with the state office to address it. And our employees got all types of awards and rewards for not driving their cars. And so if we can do that again, that would be helpful as well. And that's it, thank you. This is great work on everybody's part, thank you.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, I would say I'm certainly in support of, you know, kind of a hybrid work model, but I just would caution and say, office trends do come and go. And, you know, we were at a pivot point. We are, much of our operations are about interaction with citizens. And there is, there's a balance to all of that, you know, that kind of, that takes place. There's also, you know, I think a balance, and I say this from managing people and working in these environments, there's also the balance in terms of your ability to onboard people in a hybrid work environment and build and create culture around that. And I just think, as we go through this, I think we need to be, you know, highly cautious of that and really sort of, you know, look at this and monitor it. And if we're gonna have hybrid models, make sure people are actually showing up so that you are, you know, you're adhering to that, there's conformity to it, that you're fostering those times for people to be in, collaborate, et cetera. And that, there should be no question about citizens being shorted, you know, with us going to a model like this. So it's, you know, it's just, there's a balance, I think, associated with all of this, is what I'm saying. And, you know, I, and I think we just really need to really think long and hard about that and how we're maximizing our space, you know, throughout the county, so.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
That concludes our presentation.
Okay. 103, what else?
We have the add-on item, animal control.
Sound that, please. And just for the record, just for the official record, it sounds like there's unanimous support for some hybrid model, whether that means having them here one day or two days or three days, or, I mean, away from here, one day or two days or three days or four days or every day. I totally object to that, just for the record.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, is the manager seeking a, you know, direction or a specific vote on this, or is he just more like, all right, hey, you know, you're looking just for our counsel to figure out how you were gonna implement this throughout?
Yes, sir, this was an update. I wasn't asking for any direction.
Got it.
Okay.
240175, discussion, animal control, sponsored by Commissioner Barrett.
Colleagues, I just wanted to bring this up because it was brought to my attention that the City of Atlanta has not signed their intergovernmental agreement regarding our animal control services. And to my knowledge, all of the other 14 cities have signed their intergovernmental agreements, and we're just not seeming to make any progress with City of Atlanta. Mr. County Manager, would you mind reviewing sort of the timeline of what was presented to the City of Atlanta and when, and kind of where we are right now?
Yes, ma'am, and nothing like late-breaking news. I also have an email from the City of Atlanta.
Oh, well, that's convenient.
All right. So just briefly, to set the stage for everyone, as well for the public, as you know, Fulton County is not required to provide animal services, except in the case of rabies. So on broadly speaking basis, this is not our role. However, for decades, we have done so. There was an assumed, I think, benefit of economies of scale of doing it one place versus in 15 places. So that has been done. However, we had a facility that was over 40 years old, was well documented to be overcrowded, and in fact, the Department of Agriculture had given us a couple of audit findings, and I personally had met with them, and the patience was running thin there with our current setup. We committed through your guidance to the building of a new facility. That new facility, obviously, is much larger, it's twice as large, requiring additional staff to properly staff. In addition to that, there are other services, like veterinary services for spay and neutering, all of which would accrue to the long-term benefit of citizens and the animals per se. So all of that together adds up to additional operating costs. Fulton County, again, through your direction, bore the cost for the construction of the new facility. So that $40 million cost is not in the numbers that I'll share with you in a moment. That's, again, borne by our debt service and not asked for city reimbursement. Because this has always been done under an IGA with each city and with a full reimbursement model, we went to them during 2023 with this now fleshed-out model with a new facility, enhanced levels of staffing, and a reminder that for the last six years, there's been no increase in cost passed on to them or to us through the contract with Lifeline. However, Lifeline, to even make ends meet, had to find ways to raise philanthropic money, but in addition to that, Fulton County contributed 1.6 million in 2023, again, to deal with the cost. As we presented to each one of the cities, all of them experienced a fairly significant increase because the overall cost involved in this went from 6.4 million to 11.7 million on an annual basis, so almost double in terms of total. In the case of, again, it depends on the utilization of these services, the charges that each city would experience. And the utilization is calculated based on dispatched calls for service. Again, that's a cost allocation model that's been in place for years. Could it be refined, perhaps, and made more precise? If you've ever dealt with cost allocation, it's sometimes in the eye of the beholder. I'd say, yes, it could be, but it would then have a consequence of moving costs from one city to another. And as we sit here today, 14 cities out of the 15 have accepted the cost allocation model, the increased cost, and approved and signed IGAs, 14 cities out of 15. The City of Atlanta was going from 2.6 million to 6.4. We have met with them both mid-year of 2023 and then hosted them at the new facility at the end of 2023. And then most recently, the chairman and I and Alton Adams visited with the mayor and his staff last week. There, we were still expecting agreement before today, we did not have that prior to today. I do have an email as late as about 15 minutes ago, which seems to indicate that they are getting there. They would like to work with us on other areas, which I don't think would be They would like to work with us on other areas, which I don't think would be a financial offset. There are more areas that we're already working in like permanent supportive housing, pursuing the state jointly together, which I think would add a great deal of health to our behavioral health agenda in total. As you recall, we just talked about the Behavioral Health Crisis Center being funded at 11 point, is it 11.2, what's the number, 11.2 million? The full funding for that is 13.3. So even though we got back up to 11.2, we really need to be at 13.3 million to fully staff the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which is going in the City of Atlanta on Metropolitan. But there are two others that are needed based on DBHDD's analysis. But as you know, the City of Atlanta is also struggling with and we should be concerned about homelessness in general, as well as migrant population potential increases here. So there's plenty of work to do jointly together. Right now, I don't have a signed agreement for the City of Atlanta. I think that's why this is on this agenda to, to both inform you as well as take any direction from you. Based on the email that I just received, I'd probably ask for a little bit more time to see if I can run all this to ground. We can run all this to ground, getting to an agreement where we're not in a, not in a position where we, we are either denying service, which I don't think would be in anyone's best interest, or withholding payments. Because obviously, we make payments to the City of Atlanta, just like they would be making payments to us. We could certainly do that if we chose to do so. But perhaps there's a, there's a path forward.
I think my concern, Mr. County Manager, is that they've said, you know, I was hoping the email was something more earth-shattering than we're almost there, but, you know, they've said we're almost there, they said we're there, we're going to sign, we're there, we're not, and, and they don't seem to be doing it. So I'm not quite sure what the holdup is at this point. And they're putting us in a very difficult position. We certainly do not want to hurt the citizens of Fulton County or Atlanta, who are the same people in, in that case, in the case of those boundaries, by not performing this service. On the other hand, they owe us money and they, we need to get this IGA in place. So I have concerns about what do we do? How do we move forward? I agree with you that we would not like to disrupt that service, but maybe we do need to look at withholding these other payments in order to sort of balance the books, if you will. And the only other thing I have to say is I think you, you talked about them wanting some other things from us, which I certainly appreciate. And I think there's nothing that they want that we're not already willing to do. I think we're, we're, you know, all concerned about the homelessness issue from the top of the county to the, you know, the very north to the very south. I think all of the commissioners here have, you know, expressed an interest in working on that issue and trying to be helpful in whatever way that we can with the various cities. Same thing with behavioral health. Obviously, we'd love their partnership and we want to work on that as well, but these seems, these things I think are very clearly unrelated to animal control. And to say that they're waiting to hear from us on a partnership or not, on those things seems disingenuous to me. Either, you know, this is about animal control, it's not about add-on items or other things or other negotiations to me. We didn't do that with any of the other cities. We presented them IGAs, we talked through the terms, they understood the situation and they signed their IGAs. They didn't ask for additional favors. So I think, you know, I think, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I know I'm certainly happy to have any conversations they want to have about working on homelessness and working on behavioral health issues, but we need to move forward on this IGA.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
County Manager, I'm going to respect the fact that you, you want a little bit more time to work with them. I think the amount of time and investment that Fulton County has made in animal services speaks to where we are in our dedication to our citizens. I'm a little thrown back to me, and I could be wrong, not perfect, but it almost sounds like a, well, we're going to hold it in order to barter for something else. Now, I could be wrong and if I am, so be it, but I think that is, that puts a bad taste in my mouth, so to speak. I think if they're the only city holding out, maybe it's time for me to do a town hall and let the citizens of City of Atlanta know what's going on, because at the end of the day, we've got to be partners here. We have to work together. I am all for doing affordable housing. I am all for working with the homeless issue, but I'll tell you what I'm not for. I'm not for the nonprofits that I hear from daily that can't get their money from City of Atlanta in a timely fashion. And so we've got homelessness being added to because we have nonprofits operating in the City of Atlanta that can't get their money in order to help the homeless. And so while I am empathetic to what their issue is, at the end of the day, there was an understanding, there was an agreement, and I would like to move this forward and I will follow your lead at some point if you feel as though we're not going anywhere with it, because this is very important. Fulton County and City of Atlanta must show the leadership. City of Atlanta should have been the first one to sign the IGA, okay? City of Atlanta has the most to benefit from the investment of the, what, what Fulton County has done. And so I just want to go on record letting you know that I am a little bit upset behind this, but as opposed to going off on a tangent about it, which I can, but I won't, I will ask that you, in earnest, please keep me abreast if you get to what I call a point of no return and, and it goes too far to the left and doesn't look like anything's going to happen, because I'm a little, I'll be honest with you, I'm just a little taken aback that of all the things that we worked so hard for, and even though I wasn't sitting here when that plan went forward, the plan still manifested. And City of Atlanta has the lion's share of the benefit of it. And so that does bother me. And so if you would just keep me abreast, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Thorne?
Since we isolated the animal cost into its own separate account, is there any negotiating and that type of thing? How would we reimburse that account? Like, can we do that? We basically need them to pay straight into that account, correct?
Sharon, do you want to address that?
We do need to be able to bill them in order to receive payment into the Animal Services Fund. Ultimately, if they refuse to pay and we, and, and we continue to provide the service and incur the costs, then the county would need to also be willing to cover those costs from our general fund budget, because that's the only place we would have to go to, which means we'd have to go find money from there to cover those costs that are being paid out of the separate Animal Services Fund.
Okay. And I just want to say, you know, the high cost of having so many animals is on their intake. I wish, this is a plug for the City of Atlanta, to adopt the Backyard Breeder Bill to hopefully, it's not going to solve the crisis, but alleviate the crisis if they were to adopt it. It'd limit the amount of intakes. I know on the Beltline, you can buy a puppy almost every day of the week on the Beltline and those puppies are a lot of times sick and end up in our shelters and those puppies, they become an emotional purchase. Maybe someone had a few too many drinks, bought a puppy and then the next day, oh crap, got a puppy, let's take it to the shelter. So I'm just hoping that we can really work on some solutions to limiting the intake of stray animals into our shelter. And I hope the City of Atlanta would be welcoming that.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, I look forward to you reporting us back a favorable agreement. And if you can still may have trouble, maybe you can take over, when you, when you go to collect, you can take over Joey, Brown Sugar, Lucid, Strength, Angelico, Bongo, Big Hug, Honey Bun, Van Damme, Marco, Jacob and Cheers on some leashes and stick them there and in their lobby. And so we can kind of exhibit kind of like what goes on here, right? Tasmania, too, he might be a good one.
All right, anything else? So where, where?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have another session with them yet? We waited and hear from them.
No, we've, well, heard from them via email as I was getting ready to speak. So I think it would be apropos, given this discussion, for you and I to reinitiate contact with the mayor and the chief of staff, de-link the, the issues, meaning we have an animal shelter IGA, and I think that was our position a week ago that needs to be acted upon post-haste. And then we're always willing to work with them on any variety of things, which of course would require this board's approval to do so.
Okay, anything else, commissioners? All right, entertain a motion to recess for lunch, executive session, issues of real estate litigation and personnel.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes unanimously?
Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion to approve a request for representation contained in items two, three, four, and five of the executive session agenda?
Our motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six shades, zero nays.
I have no further action items, Mr. Chairman.
That's it?
I took them all together.
All right. Is there a motion to increase the salary of the county attorney to 327.50 annually? Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, second of her vice chair, Abdu Rangman. Vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six shades, zero nays.
Any other items that come before us today?
No further.
If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.
For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication, in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.